Seven o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call please. President. Would you please rise for a moment of silent reflection and then we'll go into the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, please be seated. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, and January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Alright, so been motion, it's been second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, call for the question. You still want us to push the button? Okay, so the technology. Alright, so we'll do a verbal vote. All in favor, just show your hand, say aye. Alright, motion carries five zero. Alright, next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Um, are there any amendments to the agenda? I would like to remove the closed session, because we're not prepared to, I don't have all of the, uh, evaluations I need, so I want to remove the closed session. I'm still gonna remove the closed session. Wait, any, any other, uh, any other amendments to the agenda? Alright, okay. Alright, go ahead, you wanna?
That's it, um...
You wanna remove?
Under presentation, no. Potomac River Keepers, that presentation. Mr. Dean Knox, his name is not there.
Okay, uh, River Keepers. Dean Knox. Alright. Alright, any other amendments to the agenda? Alright, seeing none. Uh, I welcome a motion to approve the agenda as amendment. Alright, it's been motion, it's been second. Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, uh, all in favor, show your hand, say aye. Alright, motion carries six zero. Alright, next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Items are ordinance amendment to chapter seventy related to site plan references, a resolution to authorize a public hearing on a zoning text amendment to the B-two zoning district to allow service stations by conditional use permit, and a resolution initiating a zoning text amendment to the minimum acreage requirements in the planned use district. It's been motion, it's been second, any discussion? Uh, seeing none, all in favor, show your hand, say aye. Motion carries six zero on the consent agenda. Alright, next on the agenda is presentations. You, you added, uh, Council Lady Willis showing up? Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is presentations. Uh, we're gonna have our financial report given by our auditors. Mister, eh, wait, it says Andrus, Andrew, right?
That's okay. Uh, I've, it's usually the last name that gets spelled wrong, uh, not the first one, but that'll work. I just, uh, wanna take a few minutes to go over the results of our two thousand and eighteen, uh, financial audit and the financial statements. I know they were distributed to you. If you, if you have them with you this evening, I'm just gonna walk through a couple items, um, in your financial report, a couple of the highlights of our audit and the corresponding, uh, financial results for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. The first thing I'm gonna highlight is just our overall audit opinions themselves, or the reports that are, you know, auditor type reports contained in the financial statements. The first of which is the independent auditor's report. It's located at page number one of the financial statements. And it is on the actual numbers themselves contained in the financial statements. Uh, so, you know, this is, you know, basically on the number portion of the exhibits and all that information. And thi- this is a, uh, unmodified is the current technical terminology for it, or a clean opinion on the financial statements. Uh, so it's a, it's a good report on the financials. Uh, there is language on the second page of the opinion, uh, that, you know, mentions the fact that a, a new governmental accounting standards board pronouncement went into effect that was significant in two thousand and eighteen. That was, um, that was Gatsby's statement number seventy-five. Um, it addressed other, um, post-employment benefits, mainly insurance. Um, and it was effective for all, you know, governmental organizations in two thousand and eighteen. So it's just the town implementing a required pronouncement that went into effect in two thousand and eighteen. And basically, it ties into the, there's a lot of different VRS programs that have a component to it, uh, such as, um, VR, uh, group life, um, health insurance credit, a couple different programs that are, that are administered by VRS that the town participates in. And so a portion of the overall pool of the retire, of the insurance, uh, you know, life insur- or health insurance, uh, for retirees that VRS administers is allocated out to all the different jurisdictions that participate in group life and other parts of the VRS system. So, uh, they provide actuarial information that, that is then put in this report, and that's basically what that, uh, accounting standard did. And it really added a lot of, uh, le- additional note disclosures and things to your financial statements. You'll see about thirty additional pages in the middle of the financial statements of note disclosures going through the different VRS, other post-employment benefit, uh, plan items. The second auditor type report that's included in the financial statements is at the back of the financial statements, starting on page one twenty-four and one twenty-five. And that is, uh, what people commonly refer to as the yellow book report. Uh, so it's a ver- it's the second and third to last pages of the financial statements. And this is basically on the internal controls, um, and compliance-related matters for the town. Uh, people call it, again, the yellow book report or government auditing standards report. In this report, we identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls, as well as any, uh, compliance matters that need to be reported. We did have one, uh, material weakness in controls, which is shown on page number one twenty-six, the very last page of the report, uh, detailed out there, uh, that had to do with an unrecorded capital lease. Uh, we've talked with management, uh, financial management of the town about the proper process for going through and identifying and recording that in the future. And, and there's a corrective action management response included here in our finding. But we did have that item reported, um, i- as a material weakness in internal controls. We also had a few management letter comments and recommendations that didn't rise to the level of needing to be reported in the actual financial statements themselves, that were communicated in a separate memorandum, uh, that we call the management, uh, comment letter. Um, and it basically had, you know, things that are not material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, but still areas that the town can improve in from an internal control standpoint. For the financial statements themselves, I'm just going to highlight a couple of the financial highlights for two thousand and eighteen. Uh, so the exhibits themselves, uh, for the financial statements start on page number ten, uh, with exhibit one. The first two exhibits, um, are the net position and the statement of activities. And those two exhibits on pages ten and eleven are what, on what's called a full accrual basis. So they include the long-term liabilities and the capital assets of the town. Um, you know, so to be on par with almost like a business-type activity, it includes all assets and liabilities. And from that perspective, the town had total, uh, net position or bottom line of six point two million dollars at the end of June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, uh, which was an increase of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine eighty-seven as shown on, uh, exhibit two on page eleven. As you move forward on exhibit number three on page twelve, we get into, uh, what can get a little confusing, a second different basis of accounting. So exhibit three is on a modified accrual basis. It's, um, it's on a, uh, basically a fund balance basis, and it's how you budget. It doesn't include your long-term debt as a liability. It doesn't include your capital assets as an asset. It's historically how governments will budget, you know, their funds. It only has near-term assets and liabilities. And from that standpoint, your, your general fund had, uh, fund balance of, uh, four point two million dollars at the end of June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, of which three point seven million dollars was, um, unassigned at that time. On exhibit number five, page, uh, fourteen, you'll see that that was a decrease of general fund, fund balance of one hundred and fifty-two thousand three twelve, um, from the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. So just a small decrease in the overall fund balance. Yes, sir?
So, going from exhibit four to exhibit five, you had the capital projects go from a hundred and ninety-seven dollars to, to, to the hundred... Can you tell us what the capital projects budget is there?
So the capital projects right now, and we've talked about this a little bit over the years, the capital projects fund that's shown herein is related to one bank account essentially that has been, was used a few years ago for a large roads-type capital project. The capital projects, however, if you see on exhibit five, the majority of the capital projects for the town are being shown, that activity is being showed in the general fund, because in your accounting system, those are not being separated into a different fund. And so that's something we've talked about over the years is migrating into showing those in the accounting system in a different fund, and then in having that mirror in the financial statements. Um, and actually, Reda, uh, the, the finance director, uh, treasurer, um, spoke with me recently about coming and, and sitting down with her and trying to help her get that, uh, taken care of in the accounting system so that it does report capital projects in a capital projects fund rather than in the general, general fund. You know, and there are, you know, jurisdictions that will show capital projects in a general fund, but it would be better to have those, you know, separated into the actual capital projects fund. So that's kind of where that's derived from and why it's shown that way in these financial statements.
So currently, the capital projects is in the general fund, they're not in the capital?
Yeah, if you were to go in, you know, ask for a port ran out of the accounting system, the general fund, you know, you, the expenditure lines for capital projects are in the general fund. And, um, you know, you would want to have those transitioned over into a separate fund, which your accounting system has the capability of, you know, setting up multiple funds and, and then having this mirror that. So, you know, that's where I would recommend you move towards, um, and we're happy to help in that, in that regard. The, the two exhibits that are kind of, uh, straddling exhibit five, exhibit four, and exhibit six, those are, those are really just crosswalk exhibits that try to simplify, uh, the two different accounting bases that I mentioned previously. So they will take you from that full accrual net position to, or from fund balance to net position. And they'll take you from the change in, in, uh, fund balance to the change in net position by showing you the implications of adding on the long-term debt and things like that. So they're a nice, helpful crosswalk to crosswalk between, okay, we, we said there was a, exhibit one was full accrual, and we said exhibit three was on the fund balance basis. Well, what's the difference between the two? Those, those two exhibits crosswalk between the two. The bulk of the remainder of the report are the note disclosures that are in, in, kind of in the middle of the financial statements. And there's a lot of good information that are in those note disclosures to give you more information about accounting policies that the town follows, some more information about the, the, the numbers that are contained in the preceding exhibits. And just a couple that I'll highlight, um, for you is, uh, page number twenty-seven, note number six is the long-term obligations note. So this is obviously always a, a good note to know where you stand from long-term obligations perspective, broken down by type of obligation for the town. So it not only includes, you know, your, your bonds, but it also includes, uh, things such as the net pension liability, the net OPEB liability, which is what I was referring to earlier when it comes to the new pronouncement that went into effect in two thousand and eighteen. And it shows you, you know, the increases and decreases in all the categories. And then as you go through on page twenty-eight, it lists out each of your bonds, uh, by how much is outstanding on each one, what to do within one year. And then as you continue forward through that note disclosure, it gives you basically the amortization table of, you know, what's due principal and interest over the years on those obligations. The other note that I just wanted to, or, or group of notes that I wanted to, um, point out without getting too much into the detail on them are those new OPEB, uh, related notes. They start on page forty-nine with note number eight. And they go all the way over to page number ninety-five. So, um, we're talking about forty-six pages. I saw it a little bit short earlier. On forty-six pages of new note disclosures related to the OPEB plans, and it basically goes through each of these VRS plans the town participates in. And then on page ninety-five, there's a little table that summarizes the effect. Um, and those, you know, the net result of all of those plans that you're involved in is, doesn't accumulate to a large, a hu- a huge liability. It's two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. But we're, you have to put in all of the note disclosures that are relevant to each of the plans. And, and that, you know, is where, um, we've gotten some extra disclosures that have added to the length of the report. We also have in there the deferred outflows and inflows that, um, correspond with those net, net, um, OPEB liabilities. Um, with that, those were kind of the financial highlights that I wanted to touch on for two thousand and eighteen, um, as well as the, the opinions and things of that nature. At this time, I'd be glad to open it up to, um, any questions that, that the council may have.
Counsel, did any have any questions on the report? Um, just one, in your report, do you put, like, where you see our current, like, bond rating or any of that? Do you include that in your report?
Um, we, where we would, where you could put that, and this, and I don't, I don't know that it was updated, uh, for this, or, or, or historically, I don't think it's necessarily been in there. But a great place to put that in the future is in the management discussion and analysis. There's, that, that's an area where management can put in pertinent things about economic factors and things of that nature. So that's something in the future that, something like a bond rating, something like a major initiative that the town was gonna be undertaking, that was maybe a non-financial qualitative thing about the town, uh, that a reader of the financial statements may found useful, would be, would be in there. So in the future, you know, any of those kind of things that you'd like to have included in the report, that would be a place we could put it.
Alright, Noah, Noah, thank you for your time, and, uh, we appreciate it. If we have anything else, we'll eat.
Alright, thank you all for your time, I appreciate it. Have a nice evening.
Alright, next on our agenda is a presentation from, uh, Arbor Day Community Garden Project. Uh, Tracy Ali, president, and Tamika Archer, founder. Uh, please make your way to the podium.
Good evening, everyone.
Is this a presentation?
Yes.
Here, give it to me. Here, I can put it up here.
It's a PowerPoint, it says Arbor Day. Thank you. No, it's a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm not sure if you have to open up PowerPoint or go to your... Yes, Arbor Day, yes. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Again, good evening. Um, first, I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity to come tonight and present the Arbor Day project that we have spoken with, um, Yvette, um, already. And what happened was, let me explain a little bit about T C Y first, and I gave you a few things about us. Um, myself, Tracy Ali, I'm the president and the founder of this awesome, dynamic, five oh one C three nonprofit organization. And one of the things that I've learned in my fifty-five years of learning is that it takes a village to raise our children. And this is something that I'm finding we're missing more and more. Um, not only are we missing that, we're, we're losing our youth to a lot of things. Um, the streets and everything else. So, me having my oldest daughter who's thirty-six, I have a twenty-eight-year-old, a twenty-one-year-old, and then I have a sixteen-year-old. I, my sixteen-year-old is one that I'm finding is the hardest. And because, again, we're in this era of youth. So anyway, let me just get to the point. One of the reasons why we have this organization is that we're finding our youth are coming out of high school with lack of knowledge to survive. Whether they move on to college or whether they move on to the workforce, they're lacking the knowledge that, okay, I graduate June ninth. Okay, June tenth come, what are you going to do? So what we teach them is we have all sorts of workshops. We have partnered with Navy Federal Credit Union. Uh, we have all sorts of people that come out and speak on goal-setting. Um, we taught these children how to open a checking account, savings account. What's the difference? What does it mean? Things that they need to survive out here in this world, whether it's the workforce or college. And so some of the things that we're noticing is that along with education comes security with our kids, and that comes into proper eating. You know, these kids, um, because life is so quickly, they're eating at McDonald's or pizza. My son is one of those, you know? I have literally three or four times a week, he wants to eat pizza, and he's an athlete. So when I spoke to Yvette, and she had said that the town of Dumfries is initiating this hill project, I was like, wow, how awesome is that? You know, it kind of flows in together. So again, T C Y is about educating the youth, and my daughter Tamika, her nonprofit, is about wellness. So we figure we would put the two organizations and partner together, and possibly with the town of Dumfries, start a garden. Because a lot of times when our children feel that they participate in something, and they are the ones that actually, you know, ac- accomplish this, it would give them more security within themselves. And then we could also promote healthy eating, because healthy eating means what? Better test grades, you know, it means, uh, uh, better system for them as far as feeling good, getting more rest and stuff like that. Um, so, can you go to the, the next slide for me? Thank you. Again, this is, I just talked about who Halo Academy and Tamara's Cultivating Youth is, why we want to do the project, uh, the benefits of gardening, and one of the reasons of benefiting, uh, of a partnership with the town of Dumfries is we figure we would start in our own community. And because we are currently partnered with the Prince William County Schools, why not try to present that to the schools as well and start gardenings at as many schools as we can? So, you know, our short-term goal is possibly here in the town of Dumfries, but our long-term goal is to start maybe small gardens within the schools. Next slide, please. Okay, again, I just bro- broke down...
Good evening. My name is Tamika Archer. I am a clinical mental health counselor. And, um, our Halo Academy is my nonprofit. And the basis of our academy is wellness, um, total wellness, so mind, body, and soul. Youth, adolescents, and emerging adults are my passion because I remember what it was like, no, I'm not that old, but I remember what it was like being an emerging adult and not having different tools and outlets to use. Um, I became a gardener, I'm not a master gardener yet, but I got into gardening as a way to decompress. And because I didn't like a lot of the selections that I was finding in the stores, as well as the prices of food they raised, you know, a couple times a year, it's not always accessible for everybody to eat healthy. I know that's been a conflict going back and forth. Oh, it's not that expensive to eat healthy, and some people feel that it is. It really does depend on the demographic, the area that we're in. Um, I am not on the lower end of the income bracket, and it's expensive for me to eat well. Gardening helps us to understand what we are consuming, what's in our food, but it also has a therapeutic act, um, excuse me. It also has a therapeutic component to it. And so my work with the youth, I've been joining ROTC, ROTC. I've worked with the military for a while, with the young soldiers. Um, so this is something that I've been doing for the last ten years. Also working with troubled youth in the D.C., Maryland area. What we've noticed whenever we put those kids in a garden is it changes their mindset almost immediately. They have a sense of ownership, they have a sense of confidence, they can see that their hands can do something productive, and they really enjoy it. They start talking, they socialize with each other, and they decompress. They start letting out things that have been bothering them. They don't even realize that, you know, it's happening. But it's like less distraction, it's, I'm productive, it's, I'm doing something with my mind, with my hands, that's actually healthy and helping me and helping my community. Um, and so that's kind of the basis of the community garden. And so the word "community" is in there, too. It's a really good way to get to know your neighbors. It's a really good way for people to just kind of come together and get to know one another and understand that we're more alike than we are different. People commune and they socialize, and they really form a tight bond. Um, Halo Academy has a partnership with Cultivate D.C., which is urban gardens in the, um, northeast and southeast areas in D.C. And what we do with that is, we go to a lot of the senior homes. So we had, um, was that last week? The luncheon with the seniors, I think that was last week. And, um, I also own a mobile juice bar, and so I use that to kind of get in there, you know? I fed them some good stuff, the seniors loved it, they ate the smoothies, they enjoyed the idea of having a community garden. We were, you know, just kind of seeing what the interest is for some of the people that are here in the town of Dumfries. And, um, you know, it's kind of a one-one.
So, why partner with the town of Dumfries, which is why we're here? Um, again, our short-term goal is to start in our own community, because of course, like I said, I feel like we have to take care of our own first, um, being that village. And that is one of T C Y's slogan, "It takes a village." And then again, if, if we get the word out there and they see what's going on with the town of Dumfries, you know, our goal is to spread it out to the schools. Maybe even some small companies or other businesses will come on board, you know, as well. Because if you really think about it, where is a, a whole food or fresh, um, place where we can go get some great gardening, or, or great vegetables, you know? And I'm not saying places like Food Lines and stuff like that aren't one, but they typically are not organic, you know? They, they come from places that spray a lot of pesticides and stuff like that. And if you do a lot of research, you will find out that a lot of these foods with the pesticides are affecting our children's mindset, you know what I'm saying? Um, so that's why we feel gardening is very important. And of course, you know, starting small is with anything that you do, and then you, of course, want to grow it larger. And as Tamika said, it would give, it would build the confidence of our children. I honestly believe that working with my youth in the year and a half that I've had this organization, they smile. You know, we've gone out to feed the homeless, we just did in January on Martin Luther King Day. We fed the veterans out there. We've gone to the Ronald McDana House, where we're tucking care of the families out there. Our youth have cooked for them. So T C Y is about our youth. We're trying to save our youth, we're trying to make them feel important and make them feel like they accomplished something. So we feel that, you know, partnering with the town of Dumfries or the Hill Project is something I feel would be great. I'm gonna let Tamika speak again about what's needed and why it's not really that expensive to do. So she knows the whole process of, you know, um, you have an earphone right? Or what you need and, and what needs to be done. And I know when we spoke to Yvette, she had mentioned something about the rain barrel because of the type of area where the gardening is, is back there. And so, um, she thought maybe we start off as just a plain garden. But again, as you see up there, we would love a greenhouse.
Yeah, so, um, we were shown a potential space right out here in Garrison Park. And, um, to start, it really doesn't take a whole lot. We just need willing hands, honestly. So gardening tools, we are nonprofit organizations. A lot of this, we would be sourcing in-kind donations to keep costs down. A lot of companies are willing to do this, being partnered with a town, you know, a corporation essentially makes it for them, they see free advertisement and things like that. So they are willing to do these things if everything looks good for them as far as the numbers are concerned. And so for gardening tools, like startup cost is really simple. For one to five people, it's about a hundred bucks for gardening tools for that many... that many people to be able to get out there at the same time and even just start the garden. As far as seeds and everything are concerned, Halo Academy is actually providing that part of the garden. Um, we were talking about a water source the last time. Um, Halo Academy is big on sustainability and protecting our ecology. And so gray water, I'm not sure how many people are familiar with that terminology, but it's pretty much collecting the rainwater, reusing it for something else and not just letting it spill back out, um, unused. So you have rain barrels and you collect them and you use that to water, to water your garden. Um, we would need to get the soil tested just to make sure we are planting on good ground. And the next thing is really figuring out how to, um, get the community involved. And so like we said, we met with the seniors last week, they were very interested and we would like to just continue with that momentum.
Um, any questions?
Anybody on council have any questions about the presentation? You have one?
Well, I have. So I want to thank you for. I personally. Um, I, for one. Healthy, not because of.
A desire, like a desire?
Oh, cool. Not because of like a desire to eat healthy, but because of lack of access.
Exactly.
So providing the access, that's half the battle right there. Um, and then I can personally attest to what you're talking about with our kids not having skills. I remember my grandmother having her garden right in our backyard. And we would come out and she would have us, all the kids in the neighborhood would go help my grandmother plant her fruit, her vegetables and we'd go out there and, but it wasn't just about planting the vegetables. We would be getting our life lessons and she'd be giving us advice. And that's, uh, uh, it's hard to believe, but that's where you get a lot of things that actually carry you into your young adulthood and your subsequent adulthood.
And then bringing the youth together for something that's more positive and is fighting and, and partying and stuff out here, you know what I'm saying?
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly, because you can't fight with somebody that's in, in your grandmother's backyard with them. So I'm very excited to hear about this. I'm thrilled that you all want to do business with this town and I think that's exactly what we need about community coming together.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? All right, well, thank you for your presentation. Here's your, your thumb drive back.
I'm sorry, I had forgot to mention my treasurer's here, Ms. Charmaine, step up. And my vice president Tracy, these are my two right hand, without them, we, woo. We have a lot going on by the way, guys, we do college tours, um, we have a lot of things planned. So when you get an opportunity, our website is on there, check us out, there's a lot we're doing. We have, um, partnered with Adopt a Highway, so our kids go out there, we're cleaning the community, we're all about giving back and saving our youth. Thank you.
All right, next on the. Next on the agenda is a presentation from Potomac River Keep, Potomac River Keeper regarding coal ash ponds. Uh, Dean, is it Narcus?
Uh, Naujks.
Naujks.
And it's spelled N-A-U-J-O-K-S, but it gets wrong all the time, so no worries. Um, thank you all for having me. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm gonna just kind of brief you all on, on the coal ash legislation, um, that actually passed out of the House and Senate today and talk about a solid waste public hearing coming up on February twelfth. Um, but just, uh, I felt like doing a little background, because I know that obviously there's a lot of new faces here. Um, when I first came here, I worked directly, uh, February second marked the five-year anniversary of the Dan River Coal Ash Bill, which kind of created national attention, led to this, uh, federal EPA, um, developing coal ash rules, which were adopted in twenty fifteen. And I started March twenty fifteen and I worked directly on the Duke Energy Dan River Spill with, uh, the US Attorney's Office, US Criminal EPA Criminal Investigations Division. And, you know, I'm pleased to announce that, you know, Duke Energy ended up pleading guilty to nine criminal Clean Water Act violations and paid over a hundred million dollar fine for knowingly contaminating surface water, knowingly contaminating groundwater with their coal ash ponds. And so when I came to Virginia, I was asked to become the Potomac River Keeper, a great honor, the nation's river. And I came here and, um, within the first few weeks, I was asked to come down and look at the ash ponds right at here on Possum Point Road. And sure enough, we found the same problems, seeps, um, leaking out of the ash ponds, discharges, there was a tow drain that for thirty years Dominion claimed was stormwater discharge, was actually discharging from the bottom of Pond D at ninety-two-foot-deep ash pond. Contaminants, all these heavy metals, toxic metals into Quantico Creek, um, and then into the Potomac River. Um, Quantico Creek is impaired from metals, but Dominion will tell you that they have no connection to that whatsoever. Um, and then we found out, um, uh, through the investigations in twenty fifteen that Dominion had drained E Pond, fifty-two-million-gallon coal ash pond. Um, they swore they dug it under the appropriate permits, um, but we know that a lot of that likely went in the creek, they denied that any of it went into Quantico Creek. In fact, the state agency emailed us and said, none of this has gone into the creek, it was all sent up to Pond D. And, uh, we filed an EPA criminal investigation request in, uh, June of twenty fifteen. Seven months later, after Dominion was handed their wastewater permit, we found through an engineering document, Dominion's own documentation showed that they actually had dumped a lot of that water into the creek. We were lied to. And, um, we filed the second criminal Clean Water Act complaint to EPA, um, demanding an investigation into this. Um, the media thankfully pressured Dominion to answer to that, this is your document, how much water did you dump in the creek? And they acknowledged they dumped first thirty-three-point-seven million, then they downed that number to twenty-seven-point-five million um, gallons of untreated coal ash water right into the Beaver Pond into Quantico Creek. And there are people in this room whose family members were directly impacted by that spill, their property values diminished. Um, in twenty sixteen, we started, um, testing drinking wells and we found contamination in those wells. Um, just like we did in North Carolina. In North Carolina, there was over three hundred and thirty families that were issued do-not-drink advisories who lived around ash ponds. Yet Dominion tried to claim that their ash was not contributing to any sort of contamination in people's drinking wells. But then they ended up agreeing to provide water lines if the people who would get those free, those water line hookups, um, agreed not to sue Dominion. So to us, that was an acknowledgement of guilt at that point, that they were willing to hook up water lines, but they, people who had to take that money from, it's about forty thousand dollars to hook up a water line, agreed to not sue Dominion Power, right? So this time has gone on and I, I started working with, uh, William Murphy. And unfortunately, he passed away and I think he'd be very happy today about what he's seeing with this legislation. And, uh, you know, we, uh, worked on getting a recycling report to see the viability of coal ash recycling. And that kind of led to the legislation that we have now. Um, Dominion once again claimed there was no viable market for recycling. But it was really frustrating to look right across over to North Carolina, forty-seven million tons of ash is being cleaned up in that state. Um, it's a one-billion-dollar economy in the state of North Carolina and lots of that ash is being recycled. The company called Sifa Group has set up three recycling facilities. And, um, right across the river here in Maryland, right across the three oh one bridge is another coal ash recycling facility. They're operating at a third of capacity because there's such a need for recycling. The good thing is after four years of getting a moratorium for, you know, preventing the solid waste permit from being issued, um, continuing to battle Dominion on all these false allegations they're putting out there about cap in place is the only solution that we have, we can't recycle this ash, it's too expensive for us to clean up these landfills or landfill it and put it into dry line storage into a modern landfill, um, that all our household waste seems to go into, but we can't put toxic coal ash into. It was just really frustrating. So, um, uh, the good thing is a lot of like concrete manufacturers, coal ash recyclers started coming to these meetings at the legislature this summer and educating lawmakers that there's a real need for coal ash recycling. So, um, today, I'm, I'm excited and there's obviously a lot more to this whole story over the past four years, but I, I, thank you for having me. And, um, it's been a long four years of trying to fix this problem because Dominion really was gonna leave about four-point-five-million tons of ash in these leaking ash ponds that would have continued to leak indefinitely. And they were gonna walk away from it. And, um, we know that property values have been diminished on Possum Point Road, this is right near Potomac Shores, literally a couple hundred feet. Um, so the idea of leaving that ash there, I don't even know how it was conceivable, how anybody like with the Prince William County Board of Supervisors could have supported, and thankfully they didn't. Um, so the good thing is, uh, there was a bill that passed out of the Senate today, I spoke to the Prince William County Board of Supervisors today. And by the time I finished that meeting, the bill had actually passed, the House bill out of the House, House Bill two seven eight six. The one in the Senate passed thirty-eight to two, okay? And that's the information I sent to, uh, Councilwoman Neville that she sent to all of you. That in our opinion is the good bill, the House bill has two amendments that we're concerned about. So the good thing is any actions the council tonight may or may not do, um, isn't really affected. Uh, the bottom line is for the bills, um, I can't go over all the whole bill language, but it, bottom line is no cap in place for twenty-eight million tons of toxic coal ash around the state at four locations, Dominion Power Plant locations. Cap in place is off the table, that is a huge victory, um, in and of itself. Uh, twenty-eight million tons of ash, four-point-five-million tons at Possum Point. There's really important drinking water requirements, Dominion must, anybody who lives within a half mile who's on a well, Dominion has to hook up water lines to them. None of this, you know, you know, all the shenanigans they pulled before, that's huge. And like I said, there's people in this room who have family matters that are directly impacted by that. Um, the cleanup options require recycling of ash or disposal of ash in permitted landfills on or off-site. Now down in Chesterfield where they have fifteen million tons of ash right outside of Richmond, they actually have a coal ash landfill next to the Coal Fire Power Plant that they're still burning coal there, and they wanted to be able to landfill at that coal ash landfill, and that makes sense. Possum Point, we have a bunch of residential houses. So the idea of landfilling here, I think is not a good idea. But Dominion, you know, in the whole process of working with the legislature, wanted flexibility and I, I do understand that to some degree. Um, and I'll, I'll just go through and I'll talk about some actions, but obviously the, the big issue that you all may concern about is that, um, through rail, if feasible, okay? Now, the rail provisions in the legislation, the original legislation, which basically mandated rail unless there was no other options, have been weakened. Okay, and I think that's a concern that this community has, so I hope that you will support the rail provisions. If anything, go back to the original provisions. It does require Dominion to recycle six-point-eight-million tons, basically a quarter of the ash, right? And it doesn't say where, it just says that they must do it. So it's trying to give Dominion some flexibility that if feasible, they can recycle the ash on site. We were originally told it was primarily for Chesterfield, but the legislation does give them the authority to potentially recycle um, some of that ash right here, or, uh, I'm sorry, not recycle, to landfill some of that ash right here at the end of Possum Point where Pond E and Pond D used to be. Um, trucks can be used, but they do have to prepare a transportation plan. So if that, God forbid, were to happen, Dominion says, we're gonna be trucking here. This is something the town really needs to pay attention to and obviously the county, it's really, really important. And then there is a cap on cost recovery at, uh, two-hundred-twenty-five-million dollars per year for the next fifteen years. Um, that was something Dominion wanted in the, in the bill. Um, so obviously, I know you've talked about maybe passing a resolution. Uh, the House bill has two amendments that have been added, one is to, and I'm not gonna go into detail, I'd have to pull up my phone because I just got it right before this meeting. But there's a company called NCAPIT that has a, my understanding of it is, uh, they mix concrete into the coal ash and then they basically build this giant thing on site, this massive concrete block, right? So, um, that to us is a concern because it basically leaves all the ash right where it would be. So I'm hopeful that's gonna get stripped from the House bill version. Um, the other one is Speaker Cox's amendment, which discourages recycling, prevents recycling at Chesterfield, um, because he doesn't want to deal with truck traffic in his community and his constituents, right? So, um, I hope that you will adopt a resolution to support Senate Bill thirteen fifty-five, that's the clean version of the bill, I have a copy, but I know all of you have gotten a copy of that. And it's very straightforward and we think a pretty good bill. Um, obviously, I just, if you express your support for that, um, as the Board of Supervisors are going to do, they agreed to send a letter in thanking the lawmakers for the legislation, supporting Senate Bill thirteen fifty-five and then, uh, referencing their support for, uh, the use of rail over trucks. And, um, again, I just hope that the town at some point expresses, um, some concern in terms of rejecting landfilling at Possum Point, um, which I think is a really big deal. Now, um, I just want to talk briefly, there's an important public hearing, I didn't think it was that important, for solid waste permit for coal ash ponds A, B, C and E Pond, right? Not the big D Pond where they're putting all the ash now, right? So I thought this was kind of just a benign process that they were going to, uh, just close these ash ponds. We want to make sure that they're done safely, so, uh, we're working with the county to look at what South Carolina and North Carolina has done, look at best available technology, look at best management practices for dealing with that ash. But I think the most important thing is that the landfill, they could potentially landfill ash at Pond, part of Pond E and possibly Pond D, and since they can't go down into the groundwater, they have to go up. So the idea, I don't think it's gonna happen here, but I just personally don't trust Dominion and I'm concerned that if Prince William County and Dumfries and others don't start going on record now during this comment period, which goes all the way to March fifteenth, um, I just would encourage people to go on record saying, you know, we support closing of these ash ponds, but we want to make sure it's done safely and we don't want a landfill being, uh, considered at Pond E, which is part of this process. The state will probably just tell you, well, hey, this is a solid waste public hearing, we're not even talking about landfilling. But I think this is an important opportunity to go on record and make that very clear. Um, and then obviously, I think the county talked about taxing, um, if truck traffic were to occur, um, finding incentives to make sure that Dominion moves toward the rail option as opposed to using trucks that would come right down, because this road can't handle that. There's no way, that's in bad condition, those property values, those community, those people have been impacted. And quite frankly, we saw this in North Carolina with Duke Energy, using that as a scare tactic to discourage communities from not cleaning up ash. Um, but when there's options like barge and rail, um, it just seems they should be doing that. The original legislation did encourage strongly the use of rail. And so, um, I sent some information about the bill, the current version of the bill, and just really tried to keep it very simple about the count supporting and adopting a resolution um, to support Senate Bill thirteen fifty-five in that form. And obviously, if you want to weigh in on the House bill and say, don't support those, that's your call, but I don't think you're prepared for that tonight. And I think just showing your support for the Senate bill version is a very good first step and I'm happy to help um, in any way down the road here, but, um, just thank you for having me, thank you for your leadership on this because the town did request a criminal investigation into that dumping. And, uh, that, that meant a real lot, I think it prompted EPA to get involved in that. Um, and anyway, I'm happy to answer questions, so.
Yeah, there's, um, I think there's one or two questions coming from the audience, uh, thank you for your presentation.
Sure, sure.
Uh, one of the things we would have liked to have seen written into the bill was funding for that road to ensure. We know a lot of that money that Dominion put there is just money that they're gonna put on our rate holders, it's gonna be pass-through money that all of, uh, all of us are gonna have to pay on our bills, you know, for hauling that off on rail. Now, we know rail is a viable because it all came in on rail.
Absolutely.
So it should all go out on rail and absolutely not come down Possum Point. And we're already on the record with a resolution stating um, that we don't want any truck traffic coming down Possum Point Road.
Good for you.
So we just want to make sure and, and we urge, uh, a lot of, on the transportation, our transportation lobbyists and all of that, that if any of those bills pass, that they needed to have some funding attached to it. So that was one of the things we included in our legislative agenda, to make sure that we have funding for it. Vice Mayor has.
And again, just to respond to that, you know, there is barge too, that recycling facility is literally twelve miles down river and both facilities have barge operations. You have a coal ash recycling facility twelve miles down river that is operating at a third of capacity. So, you know, I guess all I'm saying is the legislation, even Senator Sorbell has been a great leader on this, said, you know, it's not what I would have written, but it was the compromise, I think, the governor and the Dominion and the various powers that be came to. The good thing is we have no cap in place, that's off the table, there's drinking water provisions. And I guess my point is, I think, you, do whatever in your letter that state whatever you feel as a town and community. But I, I guess my point to you is show up to this public hearing, but more importantly, take some of this initiative on your own, because I think that's where it's gonna come down to. If you don't want truck traffic coming down that road, um, I don't know that that's gonna be written in or particularly funding. or particularly funding for that. I think you're gonna maybe have to work with the county to come up with some of that. That's, that's something, that's something moving forward you should really think about. I hope that makes sense.
Okay, thank you for coming out tonight, um, the presentation. Dominion did come out a few months ago, and I asked them this question at this time, and, um, perhaps you could shed some more light on this for me. So, my understanding is that the coal ash was deemed, uh, hazardous waste rather than toxic waste, which means by rendering it hazardous waste, it's pretty much just trash, and it can be put in a landfill. But I have some very serious concerns about it being rendered regular garbage. How much of a hazard does it present being, because that means it could be disposed of with regular household trash, like, and if we're taking this trash and we're putting it in the landfill, how much danger does that present to our residents? Because it's not really going anywhere.
Well, that, that's actually a, a great question, a good concern. So, um, several years ago, when they were writing and developing the coal ash rules, there was, you know, people in the environmental community said that this stuff should be classified as hazardous material, because there's, out of the thirty-two metals that you find in ash, there's probably about ten or twelve of like cobalt and arsenic and mercury that are potentially cancer-causing, right, or carcinogenic. We lost that fight. EPA adopted the rules because of, quite frankly, lobbying from Dominion, and even lobbying from Virginia DEQ, David Peller, lobbied on behalf of Dominion, to say that the rules should encourage and incentivize beneficial reuse of recycling of ash, right? Putting it into concrete blocks and bricks and things like that. And what's crazy about all this is that this is what the industry wanted, right? And they got it, they got that put into the coal ash, it wasn't haz, declared hazardous waste, and it wasn't put in, and the recycling and the beneficial reuse options were put into the actual, uh, legislation at the federal level, which was adopted by the state of Virginia as well. I will just say that after looking at that and realizing that was the playing field that we were forced to work with, we started looking at recycling, we did our own recycling report. And I can tell you that when you take ash, the, the, the big problem is these ash ponds, they're wet, they're like giant percolators, and they're unf, no filter, so, no liner system. So, all that comes, and those dissolved metals seep down into the ground, go into groundwater, go into the rivers, go into people's wells. That's when it's in its most dangerous form. So, taking this ash out, drying it out, really, really important, putting it into a lined landfill system, um, or recycling it, put it in these blocks, makes this concrete way stronger. The Roman aqueducts were built two thousand years ago with volcanic ash, which they're still standing today, so it actually binds and solidifies. So, I guess my point is, is that after looking a lot of the data and the research, this is why I support recycling. I've always felt, I am not as comfortable asking some other community to re, to have ash relocated in their community. Rather, we should be recycling it. The lawsuit I filed against Duke Energy led to cleaning up and recycling of all that ash on-site, and none of it was moved to another community. Now, this legislation does require certain use of this. We already have coal ash landfills in Virginia, Amelia County is one that's getting ash from Duke Energy. So, putting it into a landfill that's for coal ash, that's lined, uh, with synthetic liners, with leachate capture, and it's dried out, allows that stuff to possibly be recycled down the road. But it also puts it in a much safer location away from rivers, homes, drinking water, away from Potomac Shore. So, you know, I understand your concern. All I'm saying is that I think this legislation is probably the best thing we can get out of everything that we've dealt with, and I think the recycling provisions are, are at least fairly reasonable. And I haven't seen anything from EPA or others that suggests that recycling, uh, causes any health impacts, you know, in terms of the research I've done on this.
Okay, I was just wondering, because it's not even like we would be taking it to another community, they'd be taking it like right up the street. Like, it would be.
Well, now, the, the thing is, is I don't think that they can take it to a, an existing landfill.
Okay, okay, got it, okay.
They would have to create a coal ash landfill, that's my understanding of legislation, but feel free to check.
Okay.
Um, I don't think, and if they did, it would have to be a very small amount, 'cause I know when they cleaned the metals ponds out, they were moving that stuff. And I asked Tom Smith, the Solid Waste Manager for the county, and he said they were moving it to King George's County, because it was a certain percentage they could put into that landfill, because they hadn't exceeded this certain percentage threshold. So, if they are allowed, it's just tiny, tiny amounts, based on my understanding. But again, feel free to talk to Tom Smith, the county manager, um, and that way you have a better understanding, 'cause that's not my area of expertise, but I hope that's helpful.
All right, well, thank you, Dean.
Is that it? Okay, hey, thank you all, I greatly appreciate you having me here, take care.
All right, next on the agenda is citizen comment period. Currently, are there any citizens signed up to speak? Uh, this time, are there any citizens wishing to speak? All right, just come to the podium and, uh, uh, state your name, the podium over here? Uh, just state your name, your address, name of your business or company, or if you represent yourself, just let me know.
Hello, check mic up. Um, good evening, this is my first time speaking in general in front of people, so if I stutter, it's my little nervousness. Um, my name is Nathaniel Brashay. I do support everyone speaking, um, I am a big fan of the community, and, and I can help, uh, talk to you about that, spread out through my job. I was, um, told about this, um, this public hearing, uh, by an important man. I ran into my job, um, couple, um, couple of days ago, and, um, I don't know if it was a blessing or, you know, luck. I do wanna speak about a, a, a certain incident, I'm not, I'm not supposed, I don't know if I'm allowed, 'cause I'm, to be honest, I'm scared. You know, I'm a young, young guy.
It's okay, you got five minutes.
All right, so, um, it's about a, a traffic stop that happened to me in, in July, uh, right here, um, right down the street, oh, up the street. I don't know if you guys know about the self-car wash, that's right around the corner. That day, I was with a couple of car friends there, and, um, usually, like, I, like, we come here like three times a week, it was the summer, so, and we all have nice cars, so to me, we all have nice cars. And, um, we go there, wash our cars, and usually, it's most sometimes the same time, and we always, and me as a former MP, and I'm always, uh, wanna be a law enforcement, I know where the speed traps are at, you know, I don't know, it's me being a car guy, but I do know the speed traps mo, majority of, mo, most of the same locations. And this night, we saw two cruisers, well, I saw one, well, I saw two, but one of them, so, so one around, um, where the stop sign is at, right here, I don't know if you guys know that one stop sign? When you make a left, uh, I do have a picture of it, uh, this stop sign? So, right to the left is where the cop was at on the speed trap. We all saw him, 'cause he was there prior, when we got to this, to the car wash. And when we was leaving, we all told each other in group chat, "Hey, as a, the, the speed trap is there right there, so don't do no like crazy pulls, like, speed off." And we, we do have loud exhaust. So, when we all pulled out, left going up, we saw him pulled out. So, it was like, okay, he's about to get one of us. So, um, we, um, we still proceeded, proceeded, and then when we go to the left, it's like, you know, we went to the community lot, 'cause we, we was planning to go to Checkers to go eat. And that's when the cop put the lights on, on, on me and another officer, and then, uh, another, uh, my friend, sorry about that. So, I asked him, "Hey, what, uh, what's the purpose of course for a stop, um, for, um, pulling me over?" You know, and when he first came, he looked a little hostile, with his hand and, and his weapon, you know? Think of, think about it, I, I am Hispanic, but people think I'm black, my skin. And then, these day, this generation, I'm not judging all officers, Colonel, but, um, you know, things happen, you see the news. And to be honest, I was like, "Oh, my God, don't tell me something like similar is gonna happen to me." You know, he asked me, um, "Do you know why I pulled you over?" I said, "Actually, no." To be honest, uh, well, I have my windows down, I do have one, tinted windows, but I do drive windows down. So, um, he said, "Well, I saw you run a stop sign." I was like, "Which one, the one that was in the corner, which I saw you guys at?" He said, "Yeah." I said, "That's impossible, 'cause you saw, he, he said I stopped there for a period amount of time. The reason why I stopped, 'cause there was eight, nine of us. And if you look at the, where that short road, the curb at, not eight, nine cars can't fit there." So, so when I left, I stopped there, waited, waited, and see all the lights, okay, we text, hey, we out. So, we pull up, I run the corner, I'm going, I drive slow, slow to anyone to catch up. And that's when we saw him pull out, and then, I'm not a person to, to complain, 'cause I do support law enforcement, you know, I actually do wanna work for the Dumfries Police, but, um, you know, this incident, it's like, it actually changed my, kinda my mind, and, uh, and I, I don't even know what to say, and, and it's just, let's say like, if I get caught speeding, I will own up to it, speeding, I, uh, you call me speeding, but this is that one incident, there is no way that I could run a stop sign. He said I run a stop sign, but if anyone knows that stop, this road, that's impossible, 'cause the, the main Route One highway is right there. And if I run a stop sign, how can you say I stopped at that for a long period of time? But then again, I am a, I'm a regular citizen compared to a cop, you know? In court, you know, a cop, they say, "Well, I saw him going seventy." You know, much, ninety-five, ninety percent of the time, is, is the cops word against us. And then, and then, and it's hard, and you know, and at that, that, that time, we put my record up, it was all license suspended, I was like, "Okay, you know what? I didn't know." And he's like, "Okay," he booked me in, took me in, let me go, and then, um, when it first came, I was like, "Look, um, there's the prosecutor, I didn't even know she was gonna be here today," so I was kinda a little nervous. So, I know it's illegal to talk to a prosecutor once it's still going on trial. So, um, but she is a very helpful person, um, currently, right now, my situation is, um,
you have about one minute.
Okay, um, so I was charged with a license, but the, the initial stop for the stop sign wasn't in court. So, basically, the only charge that's in court right now, I look it up, is my driving suspended license, which, um, I talked to the prosecutor, "Look, I will do anything to get it dropped," you know, and I went to DMV, court, it was four thousand in court, you know, I went out my way, got a loan, got that paid off. And then, you know, and then when the, when each court they came up, the officer does not want the charge to get dropped, even with no license charge. And then, the fact that, um, this, for my license to be suspended, again, could change my, could change my life and my career, you know? Even suspended for ninety days, ninety days is hard, you know, well, my, my line of job is, is hard. And I'm just looking at anyone could, could help, consider this as a faith. You know, I do got my license, I went out my way, I'm, got my life right back in track. Last thing I need is an officer, you know, I know, to me, it looks like he didn't, didn't like me, 'cause I, 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 I just, I got my life, my, everything together, it's like, well, so. I'm sorry about the nervousness, it's just, I, I, I don't understand, it's still, a lot of my mind, it's like, it's just, I got my life back together, you know, um, may I say what? Can I?
Well, that's, okay, well, that's your, that's your time, so.
I know, I'm just, uh.
So, you, you can see it afterwards or something, but that's.
Okay, sorry about that.
Are there any other citizens, uh, eager to speak? Thank you. Can you, uh, sir? Can you just sign, sign in the sheet over here, so we have your information? So, so you can get response. We don't respond from the dials, but you will get a response from council members that wanna respond. All right, state your, uh, your name, the name of your business, and, uh, your address, please.
Yes, my name is Caprice Piper. Um, the name of my business is Divine Inspirations. My address here in Dumfries is thirty-six, thirty-five, Brock and Browell Drive, Dumfries. All right, so, thank you so much for having me, allowing me to speak today. The last time I was here, um, it may have, may have been two meetings ago. I did speak and, um, address the council in regards to, um, the community center. Thus far, I haven't seen any, um, de, uh, new development, developments. I spoke to Yvette, she did mention that the upstairs, um, of the community center is currently being housed as a storage area, which to me is rather disappointing, considering a community center is for the purpose of community. So, I definitely, um, again, wanted to address that in, in hopes that we would consider, or maybe even brainstorm what we can do, um, with the, I guess, the equipment or what have you that's in, um, the community center now, so we can utilize, best utilize that for the purposes that it was meant to, um, be for, which is serving the community. I definitely, um, was happy to hear that the Dumfries is, um, partnering with local, other local nonprofits, um, to provide, um, services to our community. Not sure, we did ha, once have a garden in the, um, the town of Dumfries, not too sure what happened to that garden, but definitely, um, looking forward to seeing that, that happen, especially since it would be helping to cultivate wellness within our community. And we're also, um, working with, um, local nonprofits as well. So, um, again, I do definitely still wanna see more activities for our young people. Many years ago, when I first moved here to Dumfries, we had special events, um, that was really catered to our children. Specifically, we had, uh, for instance, um, Dumfries Got Talent, which I know my children specifically really love, looking forward to those, the, um, Dumfries Got Talent. And it's just, it's just really a way to bring the talent of Dumfries together, support, to support one another, and really, um, shine the light on the arts. And I think we have, um, as a town, haven't been so great in cultivating the arts. We have many, many talented individuals that live right here in the town of Dumfries, but there's no platform to give them to be able to showcase their, their skills. Another point, um, to that is that we also have a lot of individuals here in the communities that's willing to provide their time and volunteer, such as myself. So, I would, you know, would like to see more events, more community events that really focuses on our children and our families, um, and some partnership with individuals in the communities that have specialized, uh, focuses, um, like in the arts, um, and, um, maybe education or, um, gardening and other, uh, special projects and so forth, so, I really would like to do that. My last, um, comment I would like to make as well is that, um, I've been made aware that the town of Dumfries provides grants, um, to local nonprofits, um, or monies, monitaries, donations to, um, local nonprofits. And for me as a nonprofit, and I've been living here for many of years, I've never heard of this grant. So, I would like to have more visibility to that grant. I know that my nonprofit in particular could definitely benefit from that, especially since we've been doing a lot of work, um, in our community with, uh, many of children that lives in our community. I have children that lives, you know, have been educated by Dumfries Elementary School. My program in particular, um, will be participating in the Town of Dumfries Black History Month program. We have done so, um, in the past. We also, which I hope that everyone will come out to support as well, that's gonna be, um, on, um, February the sixteenth at Little Union Baptist Church. We also, I'm gonna be participating in the Dumfries Elementary School Multicultural Night, where I know, um, some of our council members will be attending as well, um, to celebrate, um, the achievements of Dumfries Elementary School, which I'm really proud to see and happy to see how great our elementary school and how far they have come. They're, they're, the principal is doing so many great things there, so glad to see that we're supporting them. But in any case, definitely wanna see some more visibility to that grant, um, and maybe application process perhaps. So, I'll be reaching out to Yvette in the coming days and weeks to, and maybe she'll be able to provide more information to that. Once again, my name is Caprice Piper from Divine Inspirations. And Divine Inspirations, again, is a local nonprofits that cultivate wellness through the performing arts, specifically for at-risk youth, youth that's, um, struggling with childhood obes, uh, obesity as well. And you can find more about us at, um, sewdivineinc.org, or hashtag sewdivineinc. Thank you so much.
All right, are there any other, uh, citizens, businesses that, uh, wish to speak? Please do so now or forever hold your peace. Ms., Ms. West? No, okay, I thought I saw your hand go up. All right. All right, so, you say, "Hold your meal." Uh, at this time, we're gonna take a quick five-minute stretch break, council these there, uh, stretch break. So, if you just, uh, bear with us, we're gonna take five. Come back at eight fifteen. No cliff. No cliff.
How are ya?
Keith Rogers.
Good to see you.
I've seen a lot about you, man.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna come to work here, aren't ya?
Maybe, we don't, we don't know yet.
Come on.
We don't know yet, we, we still gotta negotiate this issue too.
How you doing, G?
Good to see you.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you gonna go to your boss?
Yeah, I think we can. Then you can talk to him to take him to jail.
Hey, you need some, you need some convincing?
You get a man for the commitment?
I could convince you.
Absolutely, it looks good, I'm excited.
All right, calling this meeting back to order, so eight fifteen. Next on the agenda is council members' comments. Councilwoman Deville.
Well, thank you, Mayor, I get to go first this time.
Yes.
And I'll be brief with my words, I just, you know.
Yeah, so they can hear you, say it all again.
Thank you, I'm gonna repeat what I just said, because my microphone wasn't on. Thank you, Mayor, I get to go first this time, I'll be brief. I just wanna wish everyone a happy Black History Month. Um, it is important to me that everyone knows, his, our history started from a time when we were kings and queens. And I am ecstatic to serve on this council with great examples of that today. Thank you, and that's all I have, I'm looking forward to seeing everyone on the sixteenth.
All right, Council Lady Willis, hit your mic, please.
Glad to see everyone here this evening, had some great presentations. Very exciting, uh, the ladies that came up and spoke about working with youth, um, both, um, both sets of nonprofits. Um, also, um, I'd like to wish everybody, um, a wonderful Black History Month and a happy Valentine's Day. That's it.
All right, Councilman Fields.
The mic is working, good evening, everyone. I'm just excited, uh, we got a lot of good things coming up. I didn't write any comments down, uh, for, for this meeting. We've got a lot of good things coming up this month, check your calendar, participate, participate in, uh, the big things we got coming up, little unions, Black History programs coming, that's our biggest thing that the town supports this month. And, um, everyone, pay attention, don't forget Valentine's Day. Take care of your significant other, the one that you love, if you don't have nobody, um, I don't know what to tell you.
Ouch.
I don't know what to tell you, I can't get no advice on that. But just, just have fun this month, and, uh, get out and enjoy, uh, be safe. Uh, the, the warm weather fools people, and the next thing you know, uh, uh, we wind up sick. And, uh, if you haven't had your flu shots, go ahead and get your flu shots, because it's gonna get cold again, and I want everybody to stay safe. I remember, cause last year I was sick as I don't know what, because this warm weather fooled us, and you turn around and get sick. So, uh, be safe, everyone.
Well, thanks for your briefness, Councilman Fields. Council Lady Miles.
Good evening, everyone, um, I'd like to echo the sentiments of everyone else, um, Happy Black History Month. Remember that, uh, Black History is something that, even though this is a month that we recognize as Black History Month, this is something that you should be celebrating every day, in March, April, May, June, July. Um, you should always take a moment to recognize those who have contributed, not just to, um, American history, but to world history. Because, uh, those of African diaspora and of African culture have contributed to world history. So that's something that you should, um, if you don't know that, shame on you. You should learn that. To those of you, also, I'm looking forward to seeing everyone at the Black History Celebration on the sixteenth, um, at Little Union Baptist Church. And the, and the children at Dumfries Elementary always do a great job, I'm looking forward to seeing them. Looking forward to that celebration, Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. If you don't have anyone, remember, Councilwoman Miles loves you. You know, Tupac cares if no one else cares, so, um, so you know, um, e- you love yourself. Um, mental health is a big thing, so you wanna make sure, you know, if you don't have a significant other, just learn to love yourself, and you are enough for yourself. So, um, run with that. Have a, um, and I mean that in the best way possible, just, you know, you are enough, you are enough on your own. I'm done.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Um, I just have a couple of things I wanna mention. So the first thing is, the, I've mentioned before about the summer youth camp that I am working on with the police department, and we are making great strides with that. Um, as a matter of fact, Officer Torres has been doing a really good job of making connections, and, um, we are slated to have this camp up and running for four Saturdays in the month of July. So be on the lookout for applications to come out in April. We are still going through a process of some things, but those are the dates that we have in mind right now. So, definitely be on the lookout for that. We are going to start small, because this will be kind of a pilot, and, you know, depending on the participation we get and how well things go, it could be something that we'll have to look forward to every summer. So definitely be on the lookout for that, and I will continue to keep you posted on that. The other thing I wanted to mention is, um, also be on the lookout for a call for volunteers to be a part of a community board. So, myself and a couple of members of the community and staff here, what we're working on is creating a board, um, to facilitate and encourage the participation of the citizens in the community. What we will do is, what, what council wants to ensure is that we are engaging with the community. So this will be a volunteer board, and this board will serve sorta as a liaison between council and, and the community. And so what we will be looking for, our members to commit to being on this board, and also helping the town to plan events and, and things of that nature, and as I've mentioned, just to kinda make sure that we are engaged with the community. So, the board will serve as a liaison, so if you have concerns and, and things like that, and you may not feel comfortable coming to stand up at the podium, this board will kinda be there to share your concerns with council, to make sure that we are abreast of, you know, what matters to you, and also to make sure that you know what we're working on, so that, you know, we have that feedback to make sure that we're prioritizing the things that we're working on as a council. So again, kinda keep your ear to the ground on that, and you'll hear more about that as that develops. All right, thank you all.
All right, well, first and foremost, I, I'd like to congratulate all the staff who worked hard on getting us broadcasting live tonight on Xfinity Comcast. It was, uh, you know, it, it's been a long fought road. I think we went offline in, in July with a lightning storm or something like that, and we couldn't broadcast, and, uh, we had some mark shift in the old building, but with a, a lot of hard work. And I wanna give a special, a special shout-out to, to Rea Nickerson, who, um, at, at the last minute with her aggressiveness, she was able to bring all the players to the table, uh, from our IT company to the Comcast people, to, to our, uh, we, we had three or four people, and, uh, she really sat down and brought all these people to the table. So, if you're watching us at home, or you're watching the replay right now, it's because of the hard work of our staff to make sure that we were able to have transparency in our meetings and to make sure we were able to broadcast. So not only are we broadcasting on Comcast right now, but we're broadcasting on Facebook, and our Granicus is broadcasting right now live on our website. So, right now, we got three streams, we're still working hard to get Verizon back up and running for you. But right now, you got three avenues to be watching us as we, uh, broadcast these me- these meetings together. So, uh, I wanna send condolences out to the family of, uh, Betty Begley. Uh, she's a longtime resident of, uh, Dumfries, lived in Prince William Estates. Um, she passed away suddenly last week on January thirty-first. Yeah, um, she, I think she slipped and fell, maybe possibly had her blood clot. Um, so, we definitely wanna keep her up. Her family had just moved her, I think she had just moved to Florida or something like that. So, it was just, it was a sudden, she wasn't sick or nothing, uh, so she passed away. So I just wanted to let y'all know, so we're gonna send condolences out to her. Um, also condolences to, to the trooper who passed away yesterday, shot in the line of duty. A trooper, Lucas B. Dow, uh, so he was killed in the line of duty. We definitely wanna, um, you know, pray for the peace of, and, um, what county was that? Cumberland County, thank you, Cumberland. So he just passed away here in Virginia. Um, other thing I wanted to speak to was the, the elephant in the room, because there's been a lot of press about, uh, our governor being in, in blackface and KK robe, and KK robe or whatever, and, yeah, KKK, whatever it is. And I, I got some phone calls, cause your mayor spoke out about this, because it, it triggered something in me, uh, growing up in environments where I was called all kinds of names that I don't care to, to repeat on this dais tonight. But as, as everybody stated, this is, uh, Black History Month, and so many of us, uh, so many people say, "Well, why do we need a, a, a month to celebrate Black History?" And, and the answer to that is because we have incidents like this, and there's so many achievements that haven't fully been woven into the American history, and we have to continue, so we continue to need this, this celebration, this month that's set aside by, uh, Mr. Carver. So you don't know what you know about the culture, because you haven't been associated. And sometimes it's funny, cause me and a particular staff member, we always talk about, uh, these different cultural differences, because a lot of times, people don't know. And, and so, you know, what was the comments I made? Uh, and I said, um, "I stood behind all of those other people that was calling for them to step down, because how can you continue to lead when nobody is following you, and you lost your influence?" You know, leadership requires trust in your ability to lead. And so I, like many of other Virginians, I cast my vote for the man, and now, like many of them, I'm recalling that my vote that I put in and asking them to step down. Take this time that we should all start to have this honest conversation about race relations, because, uh, there's still issues. You know, last year in Dumfries, uh, we had a, a racist letter that was pinned to one of the churches right here on Main Street that got a lot of, um, mainstream play, and so it, it's still alive and well, and so the conversation needs to continue. Now, on a brighter note, I wanna go back to, to thank the town staff for, um, the job they're doing on, on shaping and moving the future. Um, just last week, I, I tasked them on short notice with applying for a grant. I got my town planner, I got the public works director, and they're working with the county, Prince William County, um, to this grant on economic development. They submitted it on short notice, and, and I'm grateful for the time that they spent on this. And I, I say that to say, because this shows that we are building bridges, and we're beginning to establish a long overdue working relationship with Prince William County. Uh, they came down here as well on short notice, and they worked with our staff, and the planner was in this office, and they sat down and they got this grant application submitted. Now, we don't know if we won the grant yet, but we got the work done. And I, I just wanted to, just kudos to them for us being able to start to build those bridges that, that wasn't built. Also, I, I wanted to let the community know that I won't be giving my State of the Town address this month, as has been customary by, by previous mayors. I plan to postpone it until June the thirteenth, as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, uh, and the end of my first year as mayor, to give you a better address and to invite our legislators and our community partners to be a part of this grand occasion, and to be able to promote and to brag about what our town is doing and what we've accomplished over the year. And finally, um, I'd like to, to say happy anniversary to my wife, my rock, my safe place. On February twelfth, we celebrate nineteen years of marriage or bliss. Or, as some people like to say, marriage is a roller coaster, right? And I encourage everyone on that ride to enjoy the, the mountain tops and enjoy the times when they're in the valley, because it's the only, it's only when you get down that you know that you can only go way back up in that relationship. So baby, if you're watching at home, I love you. Uh, to everyone else, I say, like everybody else, Happy Valentine's Day this month. And, uh, my closing quote for tonight is wisdom is the reward of surviving your own stupidity. Think about that, that's food for thought, so you do your own dishes. Those are my remarks for the night. Next on the agenda is the boards and commission reports. And, uh, first on boards and commissions, we have the Architecture Review Board. Uh, did they meet on one eighty, is anybody here representing the Architecture Review? Okay, seeing none. Next is the Board of Zoning Appeals. Our former mayor and chair of that committee, Ms. Nancy West. Uh, please make your way to the podium, Ms. West.
This is my way, yes. I have sat too long, ma'am.
And while she's coming, she was the one that started the tradition here in Dumfries of us giving our State of the Town addresses, when she was the mayor.
Thank you for recognizing that.
Mayor and town council members. I'm pleased to be here tonight to make a, uh, report on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And as you know, the, the Board of Zoning Appeals meets on an as needed basis. We do not meet every month, so therefore I do not make a report every month. But we did meet in January because our standing rules, uh, requires that we have an organizational meeting in January for the purpose of setting our calendar for the year and for electing officers. So we did that on January the sixteenth, or the, uh, sixteenth, correct. And you had this report in your, um, in your, uh, minders tonight. Uh, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, present this orally, uh, since I do not come, uh, every meeting. We only have presently three members on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I am, uh, the chairman, uh, Mr. James Turner and Mr. Norman Thornton. At the meeting on the sixteenth, I was again elected as, uh, chairperson and, uh, Mr. Turner was elected as vice chair. And you can see with only three members, two members made a quorum so we could have a meeting. That is one of the reasons I am urging the council to please advertise and be looking for at least one more member to serve on the BCA. At that meeting on the sixteenth, we did set our calendar for the year, which does not mean we are, will be meeting on each one of those nights that are set. But it's more of a placeholder so that when we do have an appeal or business to conduct, uh, we will have a meeting in place. Mr. Willie Tony was in, uh, was at the meeting because Mr. Tony has expressed an interest to serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I was so happy that he, uh, has this interest because Mr. Tony has served previously on the Board of Zoning Appeals and he has previously gone through the certification program. So, uh, I believe he is pursuing that and has committed a, uh, a resubmit. I'd also like to report that at this time, Mr. James Turner, Mrs. Norman Thornton, both have successfully completed the certification program, which means that all members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are now certified through the land use certification program through Virginia TERR. And I think that is something we can be very proud of. Uh, it was very nice, uh, at our meeting to meet Ms. Katiana Fasalati, our town planner, who spoke with us. And I, I appreciate, um, you mentioning Mrs. Begley, the death of Betty Begley. Uh, had you not, I was going to do that because Betty Begley, a longtime resident of this community. My husband and I moved to Dumfries in nineteen sixty-two. If Betty Begley was not here in nineteen sixty-two, it was shortly after that because she has been a part of Dumfries as long as I could remember. But the important thing I wanted to lift was that Betty Begley served as the chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals for many, many years. It could be as many as twenty some years. It was a long time because apparently it states in our standing rules now that we do have, uh, term limits. Apparently it did not, was not in our, uh, standing rules at that time. Because, uh, when Mrs. Begley finally, uh, gave up the chairmanship, Bill Murphy became chairman. But she remained on the board. And then Mr. Murphy ran for town council, so he went off the board. And it was just about that time that Mr. Begley also went off the board. So we need to remember Betty Begley as a longtime resident of this town, but also a longtime chairman of our Board of Zoning Appeals. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that report. And yeah, we had just, I just found out like moments before the meeting that she had passed away. Um, Reddick came into the office as I was preparing to come out here and, uh, just gave me the details. So we don't have any address or any funeral. So if you can get that to the council so that we can send our cards and our condolences.
You could probably get that from Elsie Garrison.
Okay.
I think she has that information. And, and I also want to say, you know, if you can see why we need another member because we need an uneven number, for one thing. When Mr. Tony comes on, that'll be four, but we really need five. And the state code says five to seven. So keep working at it. Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions for? All right. Thank you, Mrs. West. All right. Next on the agenda is the planning commission report. Yep, that's right. Mr. Webb.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. This is the planning commission report for the month of January twenty eighteen. The Dumfries Planning Commission held their work session and regular meeting on seven January twenty nineteen. The work session was at six PM. So, so I've already made one mistake here. It was for January twenty nineteen, not twenty eighteen. Okay, I just got that. Um, anyway, um. Yep, uh, our regular meeting was, uh, seven January twenty nineteen. The work session was at six PM and the regular meeting was at seven PM. Highlights from the meeting are work session. There are five items on the work session agenda. The commission discussed the following items. Capital Improvement Program FY twenty twenty through FY twenty twenty-four. Uh, Mr. Tac was present at the meeting. Site discussion for seventeen nine eleven that, and seventeen nine fifteen Main Street, Dumfries, Virginia. Twenty nineteen yearly calendar dates discussion and adoption for the planning commission. Digital sign discussion and feedback. Discussion on zoning text amendment, ZTA, chapter seventy. Zoning Division fourteen, Planned Mixed Use, uh, District PMUD. Section seventy dash five thirty-two point two. Application requirements for PMUD, B, minimum acreage, five acres. Regular meeting, the command, uh, the commission voted five to zero to approve, adopt the commission's work session and regular meeting minutes of seven January twenty nineteen. Capital Improvement Program FY twenty twenty, uh, through FY twenty twenty-four by, um, Mr. Tac. The planning commission voted five to zero to send forward to town council the CIP for twenty FY twenty twenty through FY twenty twenty-four. Twenty nineteen yearly calendar meeting date for the planning commission. The plan, planning commission voted five to zero to approve the twenty nineteen planning commission meeting calendar with corrections to November eighteenth and December ninth as a meeting date of these two months. Zoning Text Amendment, ZTA, chapter seventy. Zoning Division fourteen, Planned Mixed Use Development, PMUD. Section seventy dash five thirty-five point two. Application requirements for PMUD, B, minimum acreage, five acres. Commission voted five to zero to set a public hearing, uh, on this, uh, uh, item, uh, changing the, uh, minimum acreage from five acres to two acres. The next meeting of the planning commission will be on eleven February twenty nineteen. The work session will start at six PM and regular meeting and, and public hearing at seven PM. The work session will continue after the regular meeting if necessary. This concludes the planning commission report. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Seeing no lights. Thank you. Uh, well done. Your presentation is always so thorough that you leave people speechless.
I'm getting older. I'm making a few more mistakes in it now. Thank you though.
Thank you for your time. All right. Next on the agenda is our historic Dumfries report, Ms. Lisa Timmerman, the director. Was that executive director? What's the title? Executive site manager, excuse me.
Um, I would like to thank Mayor Wood, Town Council, and the town of Dumfries for their continuing support of Historic Dumfries, Virginia. There we go. Oh, the button. Oh, is that working? Um, I would also like to thank Rhea Nickerson for coordinating the repair of our now functioning second floor restroom as well as thank the person and persons who cleared the snow and ice around the sidewalks and driveway of the annex and museum. Um, please stop by for a free, uh, hot cup of cocoa on me for making the property safe and accessible to everyone. Um, this month we have a few programs with a new exhibit celebrating the theme of Black Migrations for Black History Month. Please call or email if you would like to view this free exhibit in the annex. On display are two oral histories of one of debates, DeWitt Bates and Mrs. Annie Archie and the negative of the photo of King Bates' log cabin, uh, with the full inscription provided. On Saturday, uh, February sixteenth, starting at one PM, we will have our monthly children's day at the museum sponsored by Walmart featuring family history. And at, on President's Day, we will open the house for hourly tours in the afternoon featuring a themed presentation on Mason Locke Weems with cherry treats in the annex. Um, lastly, I did just have one question regarding the, um, fiscal year nineteen mid-year budget review uh, for expenditures, building and maintenance. And that's for your, uh, budget line or action item a little further down in the agenda. Um, I noticed when I was reading through the document earlier that on pages fifteen and sixteen, um, there was some confusion in the title and description. Um, the title of for ten four one five four zero zero two Locket House actually has Merchant Park, um, detailed underneath it. And for ten four one five four zero zero three Museum, it discusses the annex versus the actual historic house. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to attention just to clarify. I did not see the historic house mentioned.
So, so go back again, four one five four zero zero two. What was the discrepancy there?
Uh, it is, it is headed as the Locket House, but it discusses a Merchant Park underneath it.
So should that line item be titled Merchant Park in that Locket House?
Yes, although when I looked at the, um, information on page fifteen on your gra- on the, uh, chart, I noticed that Merchant Park did not have any differences in the proposed amendments on the budget, but that the Locket House and museum did.
Okay. So what, what was your, I guess, what was your concern again?
Um, just, I didn't understand the classification, um, and, right, understanding the organization of how it was, the, where the money, uh, was changing since the descriptions were different than the title. Um, and I did not see the historic house listed, um, either, so.
Okay. I think I see they, they moved, uh, so we moved a thousand into, to Garrison Park and took a thousand away from Locket House. But so it, the budgetary did stay, it just internally.
Okay. And then, because Merchant Park didn't have any, right, Merchant Park didn't have any differences, but it appeared under the locket.
Yep. So you, you good?
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. I'm just trying to make sure I understood the document.
All right. And, and question about the visitor center. How is it, is the visitor center being promoted over there? Are we getting a lot of traffic over there for?
We are not for the actual, uh, front porch, the Dumfries Town Center. Uh, no, I have not seen anyone come in. I have seen a lot of people, especially today actually, enjoying the park and enjoying the pavilion and playground. Um, I do have signs and I do have the door open. I have received some phone calls from people interested, but I have not observed anyone on the, on the front porch. Uh, my office is on the second floor though, so someone could be on the front porch. Um, but they haven't left any written record on our visitor log.
All right.
So you mentioned the front porch. If, if I just move to Dumfries and I come, what, what do I see at the front porch?
You will see a lot of different pamphlets and information regarding Dumfries. Everything from events going on in Prince William County as well, but also events happening with historic Dumfries, local businesses, um, other historic sites to visit, really all local information. Um, unfortunately though, the information for Prince William, um, County hasn't been updated. We don't maintain that. They come in and maintain it, but no one's come by to post the new items. Um, I do put out my flyer of all of the HDVI events, um, and try to keep that current along with any special things we're doing.
So is there, I'm assuming like a welcome packet, maybe an updated letter from the mayor explaining, you know, how these people, if you're new to town, you just moved, we have our own township, we have our own government, what Prince William County is and, um, you know, Dumfries. Everything town of Dumfries and letting them know, um, you know, they want to start a business, that process and where a town hall is located, that's covered there?
Well, no, and I, I really like that idea actually, there being a packet to give someone because if, if during our closed season, someone is not in the museum to speak with the person on the visitor center, I think they kind of walk in, see all the pamphlets and might take a few things and then walk out, but not really maybe understand.
Is there anything like a, um, maybe even a card, something they can fill out so they can hear back from you to get that welcome to Dumfries? Thank you for moving to our town, kind of.
Sorry for interrupting. Uh, we do have this lot, we do have a, a general kind of book that they can open and sign, but I can definitely create something that would be more welcoming, um, and that would also let them, kind of reach out to them to let them know. I can have, provide that on the front porch, definitely.
I'd like to see that kind of information kind of captured in the report. And if we had something that was kind of obvious for them to fill out, if you're new to town and you just moved to town, please complete this and we'll follow up with you to welcome you to Dumfries, kind of thing. Then we can know the impact of the visitor center as well.
Okay, definitely. All right. And, um, one other question, do you want me to send you a photograph of the front porch just to give you an idea?
I'm coming by.
All right. Seeing no more lights. Thank you for your, um, time tonight. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda is staff presentation and staff reports. Um, first staff report is the Director of Community Developer Development, Mr. Jatinda Kokart. All right, council, you have before you the reports in your package. Is there, uh, any questions for Mr. Kokart on his report? Please push your light now and, uh, ask any questions. Is there anything you want to highlight for us, Mr. Kokart?
I just wanted to express my personal condolences for Betty Begley. I think she has been a wonderful woman. I worked together with her in, back in ten and eleven and recently got a chance to meet a couple of her family members here in regards to her property. I think she was a great honorable woman and I just, uh, pray that almighty Lord rest her in peace.
Um, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things.
Sure.
I, I want to commend the work that your, um, your two new hires have been doing. Um, I, I'm very impressed with, with Sherry, her, her aggressiveness of wanting to get out there and learn the town. I've, I went out riding with her a couple of weeks ago. Um, we went to a couple of the businesses. She proactively, uh, created letters to give. I, I, I just told her simply I wanted her to meet the business, but she created letters, uh, to go out to all the business owners, just reminding them of what some of the sign ordinances was and everything. And to just become friendly and introduce herself to all the business owners. And, I mean, from that, within a couple of weeks' time, I've seen cleanup as, on my drive around town over at the Colonial Port, Herb Campbell's property. And so I just wanted to make sure you, uh, give her a pat on the back and tell her we're, we're noticing, you know, her, her proactiveness and her attention to detail for going out there, uh, wanting to do a good job. And, uh, the planner, I mean, she's out, she's, she's networking with the, the county, uh, doing things. She's researching grants, she's, uh, doing a lot of that work. And, and the short amount of time that the work she's done with the, um, with our capital improvement plan, working with the public works director, I think that is to be commended, to jump in and to really have that work ethic to go forth. So I just want you to, uh, let your staff know that, uh, they are appreciated.
Absolutely.
Councilman Fields.
Yes, I forgot, uh, when you mentioned something, I just remembered as you were talking or what mayor was talking. Um, just a concern about the, the new stepped up enforcement.
He said stepped up.
Yes. Mornings and, uh, citations have been issued across town, I've heard from some, a, uh, citizen. Could you explain that being that we're back on television now, I'm quite sure they're watching, the grievance process?
Uh, I believe that all the, uh, you know, citations or which are being given, they are always given for the just cause. But I think, uh, definitely with the induction of, uh, Sherry DeSilva, she has, uh, definitely raised the bar in that particular area. I think earlier there was a little bit of gap, but, uh, I have been, you know, providing her all the support. And I think she has, uh, in about two or three instances that I have kind of, uh, just make sure that, uh, how her interactions are. My feedback about her has been phenomenal. And she has really, uh, crossed beyond my expectation when I hired her or how she portrayed in the interview process, she has exceeded that.
Okay, but if a ci- citizen disagrees with the citation, what is the gri- grievance process? How, how do they come to town hall and who do they see, who do they speak to? Could you announce that so they could get the correct answer?
Yeah, absolutely. I think if anybody dis- disagrees with her decision, the first, uh, line of defense or the due process would be coming to me. And I can, you know, hear them and, uh, verify if it has been written for a just cause. Not knowing the exact, you know, instance in this particular case, it's hard for me to kind of, uh, you know, respond to it.
Okay, so basically you have an open door policy that you?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and I think, uh, even when she approaches the customers, you know, like, uh, her approach has been just that. I think she understands the concept of proactive approach. I have always liked, uh, all the interaction that I have had, it doesn't serve us well if we are in a reactionary mode. But it always serves us well when we are being proactive and we anticipate how the other person is going to, uh, you know, uh, react to a scenario. And I always, you know, uh, in my conversation with the new code enforcement officer, it has been like, uh, you know, I always put myself into the other person's shoes. And how I would feel if I'm in their shoes, if I'm getting this ticket or this N O V or a notice to await, and that is our criteria.
So your enforcement officer's presence is being felt for doing her job. Thank you, Jatinda, for your report.
And, and tha- thank you for the endorsement, Mayor.
All right, next on the agenda is the Director of Public Works, Greg Tac. Uh, council, you have before you his, uh, report. Are there any questions on the, uh, Public Works Director report? Uh, council, Lady Miles.
Good evening, uh, Greg, how are you?
Well, how are you?
I'm well. I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I want to commend you and your staff. Um, last week we did have some interesting weather. We've actually had some very interesting weather for the last month. Um, but I do want to commend your staff on the snow removal and the treatment of the roads. You've done an excellent job. I had some concerns because, um, of our senior community and, um, also some of the children that have to walk to school. But you've done an excellent job with snow removal and making sure our roads and, and streets are clear. So I just want to thank you for the job you and your staff have done.
Anybody else have any, uh, comments for Mr. Tac? All right, anything you want to say to the council, Mr. Tac? No, all right, go ahead.
Happy Valentine's Day.
All right, next on the, uh, next on the, is the Chief of Police, Chief McCarthy. Council, you have before you his report. Are there any questions on the chief's report? Councilman Fields?
Good evening, sir.
How you doing?
All right, no- nothing on the report, just, uh, maybe a suggestion or a question and a suggestion at the same time. Um, I spoke with you about an incident about one of our businesses. We had, uh, uh, someone operating without a permit that I reported. Remember we talked to you about that? Maybe not.
I, I do.
One of the sergeants took care of it, but they responded greatly.
Yes, sir.
I mean, did a outstanding job, I believe it's coming up soon. My concern is, um, could we create a tracker for some of these, uh, businesses? So that the officers can sign off. I remember we used to have that when I was, uh, working in the police department. That we would actually go by a certain business, a certain residence or whatever. Uh, numerous times through the night, we had to sign off on a piece of paper that, you know, this was a tracker. We did check this at this time and this time and this time, uh, to be turned into, you know, the sergeant and it'll make it to the chief. It'll eventually make it to council, to make sure this is being done. Cause my concern is maybe a particular business is not being, uh, checked as thoroughly as it should be, um, during the nighttime timeframe. There was a number given, I'm not going to repeat it, but it was a number given to me that it was elapsed there to create that situation. So I'm thinking if maybe an officer may have been by there, um, before the time lapse. Like I said, I don't know if they're visiting, it might have been on other calls, so forth and so on. But at least we create a tracker for that specific business. I'm not going to, you know what it is, I'm not going to repeat the name. Um, at least for a thirty day period, so that we can make sure enforcement has stepped up there. Thanks.
Vice Mayor.
I hadn't even pressed it all the way yet. Um, Chief, I noticed in your report, there's no information on here about where you guys are in your move. Can you give us a status on that, please?
I was working with the, um, Ms.
Ray.
Ray, um, we actually met with four contractors, um, over the past week and all the bids are supposed to be in by the fourteenth. Here to the council, so that's where we're at within the move.
So are we, are we referring to work that needs to be done before you guys move in?
It, it's just upkeep on the building, things that need to be completed, yes ma'am.
So wait, what, what was all in that bid? I guess now we're getting confused on the process.
The process was given, I was asked to write a list of things that, that I thought needed to be done, uh, to renovate the building. Which I gave to Mr. Tac. Mr. Tac had, in turn, gave it to Ms. Ray, uh, who, they put out a R F, R F P. And they've had contractors coming to look at the building, which I have been meeting with along with Ms. Ray. And that's where we were at in the process, I think, uh, it's supposed to be done by the fourteenth, if I'm correct.
Okay, thank you.
Council Lady Bill?
Um, yes, good evening, Chief.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'd just like to thank you and your department for handling my concerns with the recent rash of car break-ins in Port O-Dumfries.
Yes, ma'am.
Not sure, I can't recall if that was listed here, but, um, if you could provide the information that you all shared with me as far as what citizens need to do. And what's happening, um, with locking the car doors, um, I do question, I do think, um, with the type of lock and security system on my car. I don't know how they got in, but I know my door locks. Even when I get gas, I let my window down when I close the door in case I don't get locked out. I don't want to get locked out of my car. But if you could just make a brief statement on what's going on and what people need to be vigilant and aware of. Um, so they are all aware as I am, and thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, folks are going through, uh, the neighborhood late at night. Um, they're walking up the car, seeing if the doors are unlocked. If the doors are unlocked, they can gain access inside. They're going into vehicles and on a, a lot of cases, nothing's being taken. They're just going through the glove boxes, things like that, seeing what's in the vehicle. Just make sure that, um, all your vehicles are locked. And if you have security systems on your vehicles, make sure that they're activated. So if somebody touches them and, or tries to pull on the door like that, it will go off. Uh, you know, some kind of audible sound or something, you know, like to alert the neighbors, if not yourself.
Thank you.
Protected by vipers, stand back. Oh. Lee Willis?
Chief, um, I've noticed, um, I'm a member of Next Door for our community. And someone posted that the same kind of break-ins were going on in River Oaks. Um, do you and Prince William County coordinate the types of stuff that you see in each, each other's jurisdictions? Trying to, to catch these people? It sounds like they're the same group.
Yes, ma'am.
Which jurisdiction to theirs?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we actually speak back and forth through, um, they give us a daily report. Which in turn, if we, if we have similar incidences and stuff, that we report back to them as well. Um, they are aware of it and they know about it and actually they have been in the area quite a bit just because of this, yes ma'am.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, I think that looks like it's, that's it for you. All right, next on the, uh, representation, Town Attorney. Council, you have the Town Attorney's Report before you. Uh, does anybody have any questions for the, uh, Town Attorney? All right, seeing none.
I, if I could, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't ask. Well, Town Attorney, do you have anything you want to say to council?
I just, um, wanted to make, um, a small comment on, um, Councilman Fields' question about the citizens' ability to appeal, uh, notice of violation. If they receive it from the zoning department. If they do receive a notice of violation, it's typically on a notice of violation form. The appeals process is on, is, is written on the form. Um, it depends on the type of violation. They will either receive a notice, um, on the form. Or, uh, Mr. Kokar gives them a written note, or his staff gives a written notice of violation. And the appeals process is always, is always written out in there. If they're ever in doubt, they can always, um, contact Mr. Kokar and he'll, he'll be happy to explain that to them. If he's not available, um, they have reached out to me in the past and I can, I can help them as well.
Anything else you want to share with us?
No, sir.
Next on the agenda is the, uh, the Mayor's Report, Town Manager Report. Uh, any questions about the Town Manager Report? And I don't have nothing to say, I said it already, thank you. All right. Our next meeting is going to be, uh, is going to be a work session on February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen at seven P M. We're now moving to the, oh, it is nine on the dot. We're going to move into a five-minute stretch break. Thank you, Council Lady. She, she keeping me honest on our healthy eating, active living lifestyle, so we're going to take a five-minute stretch break.
You're up there. You know, we'll see how they come in. Do you have any couples?
Uh, I don't, no, there, there was only, the, the second guy was over. But everybody else. He was one of them, he was running. Yeah, um, do you, by the way, we're trying to, we don't have a copy yet. Just a question of him. Just so I'm going to say it to my.
I don't have it right now, hard copy.
You know, I, I don't like.
It's not, it's out of your hands theoretically. Like, you know, I mean, it is, but it's not, you know, so don't worry about it, just look for them, they can still hold it here.
All right, one minute. All right, calling this meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is our action items. And we got a resolution on the table to authorize the Town Manager to enter into a deed of easement with Prince William County Service Authority for a water line and sanitary sewer easement. Public Works Director, Greg Tac.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, before you, um, as a request for you to authorize the Town Manager to sign that deed of dedication. Uh, Prince William Service Authority requests two easements. One is a water line easement, the other is a sanitary sewer easement. They're both in very close proximity to our shop. Uh, the one, uh, water easement is, uh, forty-five square feet. The sanitary sewer easement is approximately two hundred and thirty-nine square feet, both very small. It's, um, customary, um, for localities to work with the utilities. And we just ask that you, you bless this and, and, uh, allow the Town Manager to sign off on it.
Is there any, any money associated with this, any funding?
It's such a small amount of property that it has little to.
Okay, so it's just the easement. All right, so you're looking for a motion to, to, um, pass this easement? Would you need to do a public hearing?
Do not need to do the public hearing because it's a public entity.
Oh, because it's a public entity?
Yeah.
Okay. It's a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Is there a second? All right, it's been motion, second, any discussion about the easement? All right, we're seeing none. We're gonna, um, we're gonna test out this technology here. If you look down, uh, the question is there. The check mark means yes, the X means no. And the question mark mean you just clueless. No, sustain. All right, place your votes. All right, you know you voted when it's lit it up on the top. All votes are in, and the motion carries six, zero.
Thank you.
All right. We have all kinds of graphs with our technology. Are they, are they getting this in the back on Facebook? Yeah, they're getting all of that on Facebook and content. Oh, there it is. Yeah, so we, we, we prefer that view there, so we can see green. Yeah. Alright. You wanna see the donut? Alright, next on the agenda is a resolution to update the council's position on the coal ash ponds. Councilwomen Neville and Mouse, the floor is yours. Who's gonna push their mic and talk?
I'm gonna start.
Okay, very well.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, um, councilwoman Neville and myself are bringing this present, this forward, um, given, uh, the recent development with the coal ash situation with, um, Possum Point. We do have new information, um, we had the presentation with the Potomac River Keepers tonight. Previously, council did pass a resolution. I feel, and, um, councilwoman Neville was in agreement, we're both in agreement, it's a joint thing, so I don't wanna say like one of us is taking the lead over the other, and so I'm being careful with my language here. Um, that the resolution should reflect the views of current council. Um, I think that given what we out and all know, none of us are really in support of that cap in place option. I think that's toxic, I think that's dangerous. But the current resolution that we have is in support of cap in place. And I think it's important because language is important, especially given the legislation that's down in the General Assembly right now. Um, I would like to see, uh, a resolution that we do pass, that we're on record, and that Dunfries has a record of saying we do support Senate Bill thirteen oh five. Did I say that right, thirteen, is it thirteen oh five? I'm sorry, thirteen fifty-five, thirteen fifty-five. And I think we need to remove that language that says that we are tolerant of cap in place, I think that needs to come out. You didn't think that?
Yeah, which, which paragraph in the, uh, the current, the, the existing resolution are you making reference to?
Let me pull it up.
No, no.
No, 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 no.
If you, if you turn to your agenda package to page sixty-eight? And I read, whereas the Dunfries Town Council residents of town of Dunfries has expressed numerous related concerns involving the coal ash and solid waste stored at the Dominion Possum Point Generator Station, and whereas there is a continuing public debate over the risk with encapsulation of the existing coal ash and whether the material is to be capped in place or removed.
That right there, whether it is to be capped in place, like, you know, it's kinda iffy. So we don't need to be iffy, we need to be, that needs to go. And I would like to see language inserted that we support Senate Bill thirteen fifty-five.
And I would like to add to that, language that includes, um, we reject landfilling at Possum Point.
So...
And...
He, he, here's, here's my recommendation, that you two take this, uh, the current resolution and then just draft the resolution that y'all want us to vote on and make a motion on and bring it to the...
Well, what we were hoping was to make a motion to direct town staff to craft the resolution.
Who, who in particular on town staff, cause we, we, we drafted this the last time together, the council.
The council did this last time and you all voted unanimously.
Yes.
So, um, council lady Ma, councilwoman Miles, we can, I guess we can craft this. But I'd also like to, I just wanna make it clear, um, redirect the landfilling at Possum Point and support the rail provisions since this toxic material came in on rail, it needs to go out on rail. And that's it, I just wanna point those out, everything else is pretty much covered under the bill. But, um, you want us to take this to the work session?
Yeah, please.
For vote?
Yeah, and just put the language in that you want, cross out the language that you don't want and put the current language.
Yeah.
And then we'll be right.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, but question, just a procedural question, if we move this to the work session, can we get it approved before March because the session and public discussion and everything ends, I believe he said March tenth, fifteenth, okay. So, okay, I just think it's important that we get it done while public hearing is going on.
Okay, absolutely. Alright, next on the, uh, agenda is the review of, yes, Councilman Phil.
I just wanna, uh, accountability, I'm always big on accountability. I wanted to first thank, uh, both the council ladies for their extensive work on the coal ash. Accountability of myself. When I spoke, uh, last month at an event in the council, I misspoke and misquoted, and I was held accountable by Ms., Ms. Neville, and I have to stand corrected that, uh, cap in place is not what we want. I did misspeak on that and rambling on and talking about the coal ash. Of course, I was in support of what the work our delegates and our council ladies are doing, but I did missquote that one part. So I wanna stand corrected on that, and I'm holding myself accountable for that.
Anything else?
I, I have a question, I just wanna make sure...
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, so what we're doing here, and for the record, I do support that we get it out of here. But I also know that there are a lot of our citizens, you know, it, there's a divide in whether or not they cap in place or they leave it there. I've had citizens come to me and say, you know, we don't wanna move it, it's too much to move, just leave it, secure it, cap it in place, we don't want those trucks up and down Possum Point, et cetera. So when we put this into place, are we putting this into place without hearing from the citizens? And this is, this is just how Dunfries is going to represent regardless of, I mean, how, how does that work? Do we need to have a public hearing to hear from the citizens?
So this, this is a resolution from our council, so what they wanna do is amend the current resolution that we adopted to, to have our current views. One is, we, we don't wanna cap in place at all, and that two, instead of having it come out by trucks, they're one, they just stated that they wanna have it all go out by train so that there'll be any traffic. Um, and then in there, we say if it's to be, if any trucks at all are structural damaged to go down Possum Point, it has to meet the gross vehicle weight, design standards and low impacts to the road. And we put that language in specifically because we knew that the roads couldn't handle no weight of none of those trucks, so that we can ticket any trucks that come down that road illegally on that road because they don't meet the weight standard. So that language was crafted, and we sat down and we had a very lengthy discussion at that time about this resolution based on the information, uh, that we had.
So what I'm asking is, this resolution was crafted with the prior council, correct? So every time a new council comes up here, this, this language gets recrafted based on the, the vote of the council, is that how that goes?
If, if council brings it up and council wants to, to, to revise their, their position and feelings on it, then if the majority of the council feels that way, then we can make a motion to move forward. If they wanna keep this resolution in place, then they can. It, it's all a matter of motion, I was, I was in the affirmative on this, and, uh, um, I voted for it and carried it, so. It's, it's always based on what the majority of this body wants to do.
Mayor, if I could just add, um, I'd be curious to know what citizens' feedback is now because we had input from Dominion, but we did not get to hear the opposition from a specialist until, you know, until tonight. So, um, a, and I think even with the past coun, council, you know, opinions change over time, but I, I think now that we have the due diligence of having the opposition present their facts as well as Dominion's information from the previous meeting, um, I, I, I would anticipate that citizens' opinions may change now that they've had another, another voice, another viewpoint.
So does that mean that we need to hold a, a public discussion, uh, uh, does this have to go to a public hearing or something?
The answer is no.
Okay, thank you. Just one last thing, I, I think citizens can also speak, everyone has a voice, use your voice. So they can send their emails, they can contact, um, everyone who chairs the bill and supports the bill, I don't have that list in front of me, but they can contact them as well and share their thoughts. Um, but I think as the council, this is definitely the right move to make to protect citizens and our neighbors who live closer to Possum Point.
Alright, seeing no more discussion, um, no actions are gonna be taken today, it's gonna be brought back to the work section. Next on the agenda is the mid-year budget review. Although it's not required by our charter, a mid-year budget review provides us an opportunity to discuss our current situation and our budget for FY nineteen and to recommend any, uh, budget changes that may be appropriate. The attached document provides information to council regarding the review. Um, I sat down with the town treasurer, and we sat down with each department head and looked at where their expenditures was and what projects they were more likely to, to go through, and we made the adjustments all highlighted in yellow and, uh, changed the narrative to reflect. Um, this time I'm gonna ask our treasurer to also come to the podium, Reda Lad, please make your way to the podium. Um, we asked her that she could be better prepared, she asked that, uh, any council had any questions to send it in advance so she could be prepared to, with any documentation that was needed. Uh, nobody had sent her anything, so she didn't bring, uh, any supporting documentation outside of what, um, council currently has. If there are any questions now that you think of, she can write them down and she could provide those answers to council at a later date. So at that, with that said, um, I'm gonna go through, uh, some of the changes, cause, uh, overall... Reda, did you have anything to add before I go on?
I'm sorry?
Did you have anything to add to what I said before we move on?
Uh, the only one thing I wanted to say was, uh, Lisa, who brought up the, uh, narrative for the four fifteen, you know, the narratives were, uh, updated by the department heads, so we need to look at that and make sure that it's correct.
Yeah. I did, I went back over it with her before she left. Okay. Talking about, uh, historic Dunfries and, and the changes she made during her report. Alright, so overall, we, we approved this budget, we approved it at seven, uh, point three million, seven, three, twenty-one, four, ten. Uh, we're proposing to reduce our revenue overall, uh, to six million, four hundred, forty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-four thousand. Um, with the reduction, as we go through this, if we don't make any changes because it's less than one percent, we do not have to hold a public hearing to, uh, adopt these amendments in reducing this budget. Alright, so what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna go down, uh, through the budget real fast, and if you have any questions at that time, you guys just stop me. Alright. Going through the revenues, um, our real estate taxes, we're projecting just a little bit higher in the public service side, uh, from eighteen thousand to about twenty thousand. On interest, we're projecting, we're gonna, um, get an additional probably five hundred because year-to-date where we're at, we were trending a little higher. Um, our right-of-way usage fees are, are gonna come in a little bit higher, uh, and these are all projected revenues, so, so all of this still can change, but we're just projecting our revenue. Uh, our business license servicing, we're projecting that we're gonna come in about twenty thousand higher than normal. Uh, franchise fees, uh, we're still collecting those, we're projecting those to come in at about, uh, fifty-two thousand. Um, vehicle tags, um, this year, we're not gonna, is this eight thousand still right? Because we're not collecting vehicle tags.
We will not be selling tags this year, yes.
Yeah, so the decals are now, uh, we finally got confirmation, so this is a major announcement probably to everybody watching too. Uh, we won't be having people come in to get decals this year. You know, we, we had made that promise and we finally got Prince William County to agree to collect it. So we actually gotta go make that adjustment and, and collecting that, although that revenue will come back to us, but it won't come back into twenty twenty.
Correct.
Yeah, that won't come back into twenty twenty, so we gotta take this eight thousand out for, for vehicle tags. And we'll probably get more because now we'll get to collect all the vehicles in Dunfries and don't have to chase people down now. Hey, so, hey, no running no more? No, okay. Alright, building permits and fees, that revenue came in significantly higher. Uh, we jumped from, from fifty thousand to two hundred and ten, and that's primarily because of, uh, the project that's going on right now on Route One.
Town Square.
Town Square.
Town Square.
Town Square, everybody, the Dunfries Town Square that's being built, the six apartment buildings. So a lot of people been wondering why those trees are coming down. You know, I, I've told several people already, so it's a project going on with some apartment buildings. Alright, so we collected a lot of building permits and fees on that, zoning fees is, we're looking at an increase on that, thirty-five thousand. Uh, our court fines are, um, pretty much balanced, we're, we're gonna increase on the fines and forfeitures, probably about five thousand. Uh, now, this category was broken out this year, court fines, forfeitures, community development, court fines, forfeitures for public works because this was, uh, I think council had requested this, um, and we had never done this before, so we were trying to see if we can track every department, so what we projected really, uh, wasn't what, what was happening. And so as you can see, most of the, the fines are from forfeitures, uh, coming from fines written by the, the PD, which is, is trending still higher. So we reduced the, the public works one to zero, and with the community development, we just took it down to four hundred. Although, uh, with our aggressive code enforcer we got now, I think she's gonna ruffle some fake feathers and, and write some more fines over there. Alright, our landfill host fees is trending to actually a lot higher, I think council, the last report that came in, so we're projecting that to come in at, um, probably about, uh, eleven thousand higher than what we initially projected.
That would, that's, that'll be the actual number.
So, uh, one twenty will be the actual number so far, so that's no longer projected. So we know that's what we'll get for the end of the year. Now, um, the question the Vice Mayor asked is, how much longer will we have the landfill host fees? And I think, um, the, the closing date is twenty twenty-five, is that right?
I don't know what the closing date is, but I know it's a while.
So, so that's, that's something, you can write that down and we can bring that back, we're not prepared to answer that question. So we'll write that down, I don't know the, the exact date that the landfill set to close. Alright, proceeds from the sale of property, um, we're, we're projecting at any day, um, and, and this would be a question that Christie had to get an answer back, do we have a closing date for the sale of the Curtis Drive property? Think they were ready to close.
They are supposed to have a purchase agreement to me by midweek, which would be tomorrow, um, would be midweek, but I'm, I'm anticipating getting an, an agreement from them at least by the end of the week, and at that point, we would know. It, it should be thirty days from the date that we sign the agreement, so, um, hopefully we'll have that to you soon.
Alright, so we, we wasn't, uh, expecting that revenue, so there's a additional two hundred and one thousand coming from the proceeds of the sale of, uh, Curtis Drive for the senior living facility and the church that wanted to build up there, we sold that piece of land to them. Uh, the tenant lease agreements, we, we dropped that, um, from the five seventeen to a hundred and thirty-three because that's gonna be managed separately by our separate entity in our, um, account for the building management. So the biggest decrease in the revenue came from the tenant leases.
No, capital problem.
Yeah, and, and the capital projects, we're, we're almost getting there. Alright, so then you go down blighted property, uh, sixty-two thousand dollars there. I had a meeting, uh, and I put in my report with Pete Singh this month to ask him, uh, the developer who had the blighted properties, right? Let me say his name, but, so I had a meeting with that developer, asking him if, huh, it's too late, right? To ask him if we were gonna get this money this fiscal year. He sent me, he, he sent it back to me in writing, and I go forward that, that we probably won't be able to receive that revenue until about August. So it won't make it in this fiscal year, that sixty-two thousand, but he, he did send me that email. But we, we put it in here because we sent the bill and we expected it, and I, I know we also put some liens on that property as well. Alright, the, um, going down to the cigarette tax, we're trending lower than expected on the cigarette tax, so we reduced that by fifty thousand dollars. Uh, our K nine unit, um, they raised fourteen thousand and that was all donations, so that was all citizen and business raised. So that's a new revenue item, but that all came in from donations from business owners and citizens in the town who supported the police department getting this K nine unit. Uh, yeah. Uh, town events and parades, there was some money moved from one area to another. Uh, somehow they had only initially allowed, uh, a thousand dollars in raised revenue, but looks like from the excitement we're getting with our events, we may bring in about thirty-five hundred in revenue from our events. Um, so now the big one that we reduced on our capital projects was the, the House Bill twenty-three thirteen funding. Um, we zeroed that out, and trying to remember, which project was that, Greg? That we... The intersection, Main Street intersect, Curtis, Curtis Drive and, and Main Street, over there by the Dunkin' Donuts and the Main, um, we're not gonna be able to complete that project this year, so we just zeroed that, uh, that House Bill twenty-three thirteen money out. Also, um, we're reducing the amount of money that we were transferring from the general funds from our, for our CIP, cause we don't have a CIB, but we have a general fund account, so we reduced that to bring in eight hundred and ninety-one thousand out of that account. Alright, and then we reduced the urban initiative funds, which was also gonna be used for the, um, the Main Street intersection project there to zero. Alright, now any questions about any of the, the revenue changes that we're... Alright, now any questions about any of the, the revenue changes that we're, that we've made?
Uh, that, that last one was that, that is, uh, Tripoli Boulevard.
Tripoli.
That we're just gonna start, uh, first payment's gonna be made after the first of this year, so that's why.
So, this will not get expended out of this year, so we can't take the, the grant money from the urban construction. It won't get paid until after July. Alright. Any, any other, uh, remarks or comments about any of the revenue? Alright, moving to expenses, expenditures to admin. Alright.
Governing body, governing body.
Gov, oh, sorry, I skipped a page. Governing body. Alright, the, the expenses came in, uh, on the retreat, so we reduced it to actual, cause the retreat is done, so six thousand twenty. Um, dues and subscriptions, why do we have an extra hundred dollars in there? We took that up to ten, eight, forty-one. Um, and the other expenses, we just had fifteen hundred and council expenses fifteen hundred, cause I think we were expended for, uh, the council trips. General Heiser and historic Dumfries all remain the same. They already expensed. Okay.
So, I think in the narrative for the council expense, it was a hundred dollars per council member. So, why is that fifteen?
So, everybody, I think we were expensed over, what was the expenses on that one? When we looked?
I don't have it. I don't have that with me.
I don't remember what the expenses.
It's more than the seven hundred.
Yeah, it was more, so what we did was, since we reduced the, so, council had approved in governing body ninety-six thousand, eight fifty-six. We just reduced it by two thousand and just spread what you had up there and put down there.
Yes, but, um, I was just wondering, where are the extra? It went from seven hundred to fifteen hundred. If you don't have an answer now, Rhonda, that's fine. You can follow up later, but.
Yeah, alright.
Alright, administration. A lot of the administrative stuff, uh, were just reductions for staff vacancies. So, when you see a lot of the reductions in the admin side, it was just pretty much for staff vacancies. We had to adjust the positions that we were without, um, the insurance and the benefits and pensions and stuff. Anybody have any questions on it? Yes. No, it still exists. We haven't hired anybody for it, so we just zeroed it out. Yeah, that was Mary's old position. You said you wanted to hire somebody? No, so, we've expended nine thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars to date, so this is, this is the expenditures. So, so we're, we're not in revenue no more. Now, we're in expenses. Alright. Any other questions on the, uh, administrator? Alright. Next is IT. IT had to increase our, we were way over budget with the last IT contract that we had. We, uh, we, we just adjusted and, and, and left that company, so we're, we're gonna be trending where we should've been trending before, but because of that overage, we had to address those bef, uh, uh, we had to adjust those personnel contracts. We're projecting probably about one-ten on the IT side. Any questions there? Alright, buildings and grounds. Um, the big thing in builders and ground, why that reduced from two hundred and forty-one thousand, um, to two hundred and two is because a lot of the, the maintenance and stuff dealing with this municipal building is gonna be handled by TriMark, so all of that money got removed out of it. Um, then, the, the other part that we were talking about earlier was the Lockit House and Garrison Park that got turned around. That's what historic Dumfries was, uh, bringing into question. Alright, anybody have any, uh, you had a question? Okay, okay. Push your microphone so they can.
Is there a line item for TriMark on this particular budget where it talks about municipal building?
Ten, four fifteen, forty-ten.
No.
Forty-two.
No, so property, property management service, but no, that's, that's, that's not what she's asking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, so TriMark is a whole separate conversation. That's a whole nother budget we have to look at. We, we voted to curate them a whole separate entity. There, there was a mo, so there's a whole nother, so we bring TriMark in, their accountants, and we, we reconcile those books together.
So, does the council see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Alright, buildings and grounds. That's what we just finished. Now, we're in the police department. Police department, their, um, their budget increased on expenditures roughly about, um, fifteen, seventeen thousand dollars, sixteen thousand. Uh, and I think the biggest was their, um.
K-nine.
The K-nine, which, which they raised at fourteen thousand, and then the fuel charges went up a little bit, six thousand. Okay, vice mayor?
The money to upgrade the town, the community center for the po, for the police department to move in, where's that money coming from?
We, we have to, we have to determine where that money is gonna come from.
So, we already have RFPs out for it, but we don't have, we don't have a, a funding source identified?
We don't even know how much it's gonna cost, and we haven't decided. What, so what is it that the council wants to do? So, I mean, that's a conversation we have to have. Because we're, we're talking about reducing the, uh, the expenditures, so we can increase it if you want, but we just gotta balance it.
Well, I guess we need to, I guess once the RFP come in, then we'll know what, what the costs are, and then maybe we can prioritize what's gonna happen and what needs to happen before they move in and what can happen over time, and then kind of figure it out that way. I just, because, the reason I'm asking is because I know that at one point, there was conversation about these things needing to be done. There are certain things that need to be done before they can move in, but then there was a list of things that, you know, the list came across as they must, all these things must be done before we move in, and a lot of it was, you know, a little bit of cosmetic stuff that I felt like, you know, you guys, they can move in without some of the cosmetic stuff. So, the RFP that's out then, I assume that RFP is for that total list, but when we get it back, we'll be able to look at numbers and then prioritize what we're going to move with first and then figure out the funding for it. Help me understand how that's going to work. I don't know if that's a Rhonda question or a, a Greg question, or a chief question. Chief says one of them, right?
Thank you for the question. Uh, basically, council gave the directives, go ahead and putting out an, an RFP for the work that was done. Um, myself, chief.
Not, not, not for the work that's done, but the fir, the, the work that wants to be done.
Right, and fully understanding that there was not a good scope of work. We have, uh, the town manager directed us to minimize that scope to just those items that could be done quickly in order to get them to move in, fully knowing that we intended on budgeting more money for next fiscal year to do a lot of the niceties. So, the, the RFP is written in such a way where we've outlined certain things, but we also have an hourly rate that they're putting for any additional work, meaning the work that we intend on having done into the next fiscal year. Um, so we'll be able to have a good idea of a holistic cost as to what to budget for next year. And we've also talked about ideas and where to get, uh, revenues in order to do the bare minimum work that we need to get done before they move in. Hopefully that makes sense.
So, we, we can keep in mind on the, the revenue side, I did reduce the amount of money that we were transferring over from the general fund. So, if you wanna put a placeholder here and we increase what we, we're, um, don't decrease the general revenue transfer as much and, and we wanna put a dollar amount there, then we can, we can place that placeholder now, if that's what the council wants to do. I think I reduced the, the general fund here by roughly about eighty thousand. So, if, uh, if, if you wanna put a number here, the placeholder, while we're going through the budget, so we don't have to come back through this, what, what do, what are you guys projecting that, um, you, you wanna spill, spend on this build-out? Do we know we spent on the, uh?
Have that number yet, do we?
Uh, council lady Willis.
If we're, if, uh, what I don't understand is, why don't we get a scope of work for everything? And have it, then we can whittle down what we don't want, that we wanna come back to in the following fiscal year. But if you reduce the scope of work and go by hourly, you're gonna spend more money, possibly, because the fact is, if you get it done all at once, sometimes it's cheaper. But if, if we've reduced the scope of work, the RFP's already gone out, is that correct?
RFP's gone out and it's due back on the fourteenth. I think that the way this will work for you is it'll give you some good options, and I'm, I'm thinking the best way to go about doing it is to, uh, identify your funding when we make that recommendation. The RFP is written in such a way where the breakdown, uh, includes upstairs, downstairs separately. Um, it's gonna be done in such a way where, where all the work that the chief has put down, like the bathrooms and the renovation of the kitchen, things of that nature, that could, a lot of it could wait until after the fiscal year. Um, will be broken down in a, in a different category, so you'll be able to look at it all, just like you suggest.
The only thing that, that concerns me is getting numbers for an RFP that's not fully scoped because we're not looking at the whole scope of work. The whole scope of work is everything that's on that list. Then you get that back, if it's lo, if they, if they give it to you, ask them to give it to you by line item, and then turn around and then we can figure out from those RFPs who we wanna look at, who gives us the best numbers, then go through the RFP that they give us and say, well, this is this fiscal year, this is this one. But, we're putting the apple cart before the horse by doing it the other way.
I think that, um, the way we've done it will be, um, accommodating to what you're requesting. And I think that, um, it'll be in the best interests of the, of the town to, to do it that way, especially considering we didn't have a budget. So, the way we have it broken down, the way the bidders are gonna bid on it, uh, I should say, the way the proposals are gonna be written, um, are, are gonna be, you could always reject them. But, but I think that, uh, at minimum, they'll be able to move in, um, in a pretty rapid manner.
Thank you.
Well, see, one of the things that you're looking at though, Greg, is this, if you've got an RFP that is sort of speaks to it a little bit, and then you're looking at moving them in because of, of time and, and things like that, I mean, it, it se, it sounds like what we had with, uh, the prior town manager with this build-out here.
I, I hear what you're saying, but we discussed this in pretty, uh, large detail between the chief, myself, and, and Mr. Wood, uh, understanding that we were going to, um, I should say the mayor, I'm sorry. Um, we'll be able to identify the funding and we will be able to get the police department, um, in as quickly as possible. So, I think that it's a little bit different than, than the way, uh, this building was done. Uh, we had the chief that was able to, um, go in and explain each contractor exactly what the needs were, so there was no confusion in work. Uh, and that, uh, was the primary thing that was different, uh, between this particular RFP and what went out for this building build-out.
That's, alright, that's it.
So, so the question is now, do we want to put a placeholder for a, a particular amount that we wanna cap? Or do we just wanna, uh, figure out the money later on when we get a budget? So, do we wanna set, uh, a, a set amount of money? We wanna set twenty thousand or thirty thousand aside till we see the RFPs, or do we? We, we reduced the general fund by seventy-one thousand nine eighteen, so, uh, we can, we can move on past it and wait for the quotes to come in? The lady mouse.
Um, I don't, I don't know that we can set a certain amount aside now because we don't really know what anything is gonna cost right now, so like, we can't say we're gonna set five thousand aside now if the, even if the, uh, like the most basic thing is gonna cost seven. So, I think we need to like, we need to get the RFP back and see what it costs, and then we can come back and say, okay, where are we gonna take? Alright, we're gonna get this done, we're gonna get this done, we're gonna get this done, now what are we willing to get, where we're gonna get this money from? But, because, just speaking to me personally, I have no idea how much any of this is gonna cost. I don't know whether it's gonna be a hundred dollars, I don't know whether it's gonna be ten thousand dollars. So, I don't know how we would even estimate how much we're gonna set aside for the job unless somebody has some background in this and can suggest how much we need to set aside to get this work done. I don't know how we could even estimate at that.
So, so, so my objective with the question is, let, let, let me just say, so, I wanted to do a yard project. I wanted to build a, a patio off the back of my house. I knew that in my budget, maybe I got six thousand, so people started giving me quotes, twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars for a ten-by-twenty. I said, nope, not in my budget, only got five, six thousand. They said, well, maybe you don't want pavers, maybe you wanna go the concrete way. I got a concrete quote, fifty-eight hundred dollars. It worked because I knew what my budget was. So, what I'm saying is, we set a budget, right, a, a ceiling that we want, and then we work within the ceiling of the budget that we plan. We can't predict time, but what we can do is we can plan our time and we can plan how we spend our resources. So, I'm not saying we're, we're saying this is what we're spending, but we're gonna, we, we need to determine what our cap is gonna be. Because if we don't plan it in the budget after these RFPs get back, then we're gonna be back to square one, looking at the budget, saying, okay, we need to transfer this. So, we need to figure out what's our threshold. Think about you doing a project or you buying a house, you know what your affordability and what you want. So, I'm not telling us to say this is what we're spending, but we need to set a threshold.
But I just think that, I'm, I'm sorry, um, I just think that, like, if I wanna buy a house and I know a house is gonna cost me a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I say I wanna spend twenty thousand dollars, what I hear is, I'm not buying a house. So, I'm not even buying a townhome at that point, so, and, and I'm not trying to make light of it, but it's just like, if we know, we need to have some general idea of how much we should set aside. I don't know, I'm not even trying to be difficult, but I don't know how, we can't say this is what we wanna spend if this is what they're gonna charge. You, you see what I'm saying?
Council lady Willis.
One point everybody's missing, this is not residential, this is commercial. And, commercial build-outs are different than, you know, whatever we wanna do on, to our house. And it costs more because there's different guidelines, permits, everything. Um, and I think, I think we are in the position right now, we can't even, I mean, I know that Greg's probably gonna say it's gonna cost X amount of dollars. There's no way to predict it.
Well, if it's the consensus of the council to move on, then we can move past. We don't have to beat this dead horse. Council doesn't wanna set any money aside, is that the consensus? Then, then we move past it. My, my question, the question is on the table, I'm asking right now, are we gonna set any money aside for this build-out? Or are we gonna wait till we get the RFP? So, that's the question on the table. I just need to know if we, I don't wanna hear no numbers from Greg. I wanna know from council, do you wanna set money aside right now or we move on? Cause I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we're not gonna beat this dead horse for another ten minutes.
Well, let's, okay.
Council lady mouse.
I would say let's wait for the RFP and then we can revisit this, uh, revisit how we wanna approach it.
Okay, vice mayor, I'm just gonna go down the dais.
We can wait.
Alright. Council lady Willis.
We can wait, but as soon as we have that information, we may wanna have a special call meeting just to address that. And I say that because as long as the police department is in their current space and we're talking about where we're gonna find and pull the money from, we are missing out on revenue. And that is very important to me because we discussed this when we discussed it. And, to my knowledge, um, just piggybacking on vice mayor, the police department was already supposed to be moved, and then we got this list. So, um, the sooner they're out into the new space, the sooner we can start getting new revenue.
Council lady Willis.
We need a line item, and then we'll talk about the money part of it. I think that's what, it needs to be put in the budget. I mean, if it, even if have zero as a, as a, the amount for right now, but we do need to add it.
Councilman Fields. Alright. So, this, this, this should've been, um, it, it fell off of our capital improvement plan and our capital improvement budget, but it, it was something that we were planning for, we, we built out. We, we have a, a cost estimate based on prior year cause we just built them into the space they were in about two years ago, so we got numbers there, but we're gonna move on. Rhonda, create a line item for police department build-out under the police department and just put zero there. Councilman Fields. Push your microphone, please.
Uh, lost my place here, let's see.
We're in the police department?
Yes. Yeah, I got it, uh, I had to find that, that item number. Uh, ten, forty-three, one, two thousand one. Uh, ten forty-three one, two thousand one, and increased by six thousand dollars. I'm hoping that's because we got more officers on the street.
What, what's the title of the line you're looking at? Oh, fuel.
That's gas prices. The gas prices are so up and down, I mean, isn't that true, McCarthy? Yeah. And we do have full staff. And we do have full staff.
Any other questions on the police department budget, expenses? Alright, moving over to street maintenance. Alright. Street maintenance, that, their lines stayed the same, they just moved some money around within departments, but as far as their expenditures, it all stayed the same. We're looking at having a, a, a rough snow year, so they, they just increased the snow budget a little bit, and, uh, reduced their street pavement. Any questions about the street maintenance expenditures? Alright. Seeing none, let's flip over to, uh, the community development department, ten four four two zero one zero two. Uh, a community development officer, he hired some new staff, so he added, uh, he added two lines to his budget, although it reduced because he didn't have staff for a while, but he added a uniforms line, and he added a tools line, because they need tools of their trade, and he'd be, to be able to have, like, steel-toe boots and, and stuff like that. Any questions about the community development department? Alright, moving along, public works, ten four four three. Alright, in public works, theirs expenditures reduced by about fifteen thousand on their expenditures, and, and that was mainly because of, uh, the vacant positions during that time. And they added some money for some blighted property in their expenditures, ten thousand dollars, and they increased their contract services. Any questions about anything in public works? Alright. Storm water management. Only thing that increased in expenditures in, um, storm water management, we added four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars for professional contracts, um, for support of our MS four program in storm water. Any questions? Council lady Willis?
It, it has nothing to do with budget. You said something about, you know, you going to Prince William County for them to take over our MS four program?
Well, we, we need to, so I've had some conversations with some of the other counties, and to see if they're interested in taking over our storm water. And so, um, as long as our storm waters are up to par, I think they're open to a conversation. So I'm gonna wait for, um, when we get a town manager for them to, him to have that conversation to continue that, so we can create that MOU to let the county take over our storm water. I think it's, uh, to the best benefit, we're already collecting it, we just be a pass-through, and it's, uh, it's, we don't have the, the resources to be able to maintain all these ponds that we have, so I think it's, it's probably of the best interest. Especially with all the rain we got last year. Alright, uh, next is the events coordinator. Department, ten four seven two. Uh, she reduced her expenditure, cause the fall festival already happened, and put money, we didn't have money set aside for the Fourth of July celebration, so we just added the expenses that we expended on the Fourth of July in there, cause we had money there. And, um, is there any other questions about the, uh, events coordinator? Council lady Nivell?
Yes, I see, um, the Black History Month celebration at line item isn't highlighted, but is there any way we can put, bring that up to fifteen hundred? Because, uh, and I say that because, especially like with the catering and everything that she needs, for the increased number of people that are attending the Black History Celebration in town. Um, she and I just, we had a conversation about that, I think last week or the week before. But, um, I think we need to look at putting more, a little bit more in there.
You, you know what, I would agree, and, and, and being in the food business, I don't think fifteen hundred is enough for-
No, it's not.
Yeah, for the, uh, uh, the food that we, we probably, if we take, if we add eight hundred. Huh? Alright, so let's, let's move that to two thousand is gonna be my recommendation.
Actually, mayor, I, I like the two thousand too, but I, I think also as far as a volunteer program, that needs a little more than five, so if we have eight hundred to play with, I, I would like to see that kind of, maybe five to Black History and three to the volunteer program.
Well, we don't have anything to play with, so you just figure out what we want, and then we-
Okay, well, the eight hundred, so maybe if you put five into Black History, and three into the volunteer program.
What do we have in the volunteer program now?
Five.
Oh, so you wanna take that to eight hundred?
Yes.
So you wanna increase that expenditures by another eight hundred?
We're increasing Black History to-
Increase it to eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred.
And then the volunteer program for eight hundred?
Eight hundred.
And you just change, whatever we do here, just, just adjust it from the general fund when we go back, so on your revenue side?
On the revenue side.
Yeah. So that way you keep tracking, we balance it that way. Alright, anything up with the, uh, events coordinator's position? Alright, we rolling, boards and commissions. There was no changes there. Any questions there, boards and commissions? Alright, capital projects. This year we were kinda bold in our capital projects, some, somehow we lost, we lost our capital improvement budget, and we lost our entire capital improvement plan with this budget from the previous town manager. We slipped in one, two, three, four, five, six capital projects that we tried to tackle this year. Alright, so Gem Park is zeroed out, because that project is complete. Did that complete this fiscal year, or did we complete it before this fiscal year started, the storm water? It was paid out this fiscal year, why I don't see no expenses there?
I guess nothing budgeted.
Alright, we'll figure it out, it was paid out. Alright, the Main Street intersection, we've already spent the fifty-two thousand, and we reduced the, the rest of that money in that, that project there. Uh, Quantico Creek Stream restoration, I think we're about to start phase one, uh, but we're estimating we're gonna spend roughly about seven sixty-five in this fiscal year, out of that eight hundred, so we reduced that a little bit. Prince William Estates Drainage Project, uh, the, these, the one-ten, was that the actual, gonna be the actual cost?
I just reduced it.
Yeah, we reduced it by forty thousand. Um, and we reduced the build-out by another twenty thousand, the town municipal build-out from two ninety-five to two seventy-five. Alright, any questions on the, uh, capital projects? Council lady Nivell, your mic is on. Alright. No questions on the capital projects? Alright, debt service. Debt service is what it is. The, the one that we had to increase was our town municipal building. Uh, this is actual, based on the bond payment. We've already made one bond payment on the building, and the second one is coming due-
In April.
In April, and it's gonna be exactly three hundred and eleven thousand, so we had to increase what the payment was on the municipal building, the three eleven zero eighty-two. And lastly, was just the summary page on the budget. Alright, so we've only increased, so when we come back here on the revenue, we're gonna increase the, um, Rheta, if you look at page sixteen, you have a question? So we, we got, so we got two different, we have several bonds. Uh, Rheta, you wanna explain all the bonds we got?
We actually, we actually have three, actually have three bonds, or four, cause we, we have the new, um, for this building, and we have three older bonds that we've had for, for streetscape, which is supposed to been around one, and two older bonds that we've had forever. I, I don't know exactly what they're for, I'd have to research.
So, two thousand, two thousand three, two thousand two, the council took out some bonds to do so, some, some streetscapes and stuff down Tripoli and, and all over there. We, it was probably a bad deal, but we tried to refinance that over time and, and try to get it down. I think that bond is in a position where we can't refinance the one that-
Yeah, we've already refunded it once, so we can't do it now.
So, so we got the lowest payments on it, but those are bonds that we kinda inherited when we got here. The goal is now is just to pay them off and, and to get that zeroed out, and the, the bond that we created was the one for the municipal building. For two, alright? Alright. So final on the summary line, what's gonna change from what we have here is on the, uh, the revenue side, we're gonna increase that by eight hundred dollars.
Actually, nine hundred.
Nine hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, nine hundred. And we're gonna increase the debt by nine hundred. And then that, that'll balance out. Alright, Rheta, what is your requested action from council today? That we, um, Kristi, and we don't, so neither-
We're now, we're just gonna add the line item for the police build-out as zero. Okay, so we're just changing the, the nine hundred dollars, the, add it to community events coordinator, and then we're gonna increase the transfer from general funds by the nine hundred. So, are they, on the, uh-
So I think it was five, it was five and three. It was five hundred to Black History Program and three hundred.
Well, you said from twelve to eighteen, that's six, it's hundred. It's twelve currently, and you said eighteen.
Okay. Alright, okay. So, um, the requested action here is direct staff to draft a resolution for these FY nineteen budget amendments as presented.
Right.
Alright, it's been motion. Uh, vice mayor's second. Alright, any further discussion about the budget? I think we went through it line by line, so. Alright, seeing no questions, call, call for the question? Alright, hold on, she has to get it on our fancy screen. Can they see the screen in, on, on TV? Script, screen? Alright, place your votes. Motion carries six, zero. Alright, so draft the resolution, bring it back for us to, alright, what's next on the agenda, everybody?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
It's been motion, it's been second, any discussion about adjournment?
Y'all better not.
Alright, seeing none, all in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? No oppose, this meeting is adjourned, ten oh one.